Okay, we'd like to call the meeting to order. Can everybody hear us back there? Okay. All right, so if we could stand for a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Kevin Ryman. Michael Cox.
Here.
Peter Hansel.
Here.
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Roberto Saez.
Here.
Just being represented by Mr. Richardsonello.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. And do you have proof of publication?
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on January 18th, 2018, January 25th, 2019, February 1st, 2019, and February 8th, 2019.
Okay. So I believe we have minutes to approve. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for October 25th?
So moved.
You have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So before we begin today, I know not all of you probably, but many of you want to come up and speak, so anyone who intends to speak today or give testimony, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as the truth to help you guide?
Yeah, yes. All right, thank you. So we're the Planning Commission, we're appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We serve as the local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezoning, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important that you attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. We have those dates available for those who need to do that. For those of you who are not familiar with the format, we have set this up so that we have continuances that we need to listen to. There may be requests from the applicant or from the staff for continuances on a number of items. It's been our tradition to approve those continuances unless there are extenuating circumstances. We also have withdrawals, and we have the consent agenda. Consent agenda is where we have items that are listed on consent agenda, we'll go through those one at a time. If there's something that's on consent that you'd like to have pulled and heard, then raise your hand. We'll pull it, discuss it, and give you an opportunity to ask your questions, and then we will vote on the remaining consent items at one time to approve. The following, the other items that are pulled will go on the regular agenda, and those items will be heard separately and voted on separately. Does any request for additional time, at least 24 hours prior to this meeting in writing? Additional time may be granted, subject to approval. And I think we have one request. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. For an additional three hours, is that right, Barbara?
(laughing).
Just kidding, just kidding. And so this is a good time now to silence your phones, or if anybody has pagers anymore, those things, anything that might make a noise while somebody's speaking, this is a good time to do that. But before we start the meeting, we want to open it to public comment, so if there's anybody here to speak on something that is not on the agenda today, this is the time for you to come up and ask your questions, or speak, or speak your mind. Who, I believe there was somebody here that wanted to speak at public comment. Was there anybody? I guess not. So that being the case, Denise, turn it over to you.
Do you want to go over proof of publication?
We did that.
You did, perfect, awesome. I missed that one. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. So the first item is PDD-19-0684, item PC-1, large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL-1808. This item is being withdrawn from consideration at this time. No action is required on the item.
Okay, so that's withdrawn?
Correct.
Okay.
Item PC-2, PDD-19-0671, it's a zoning amendment, Aaron Cutoff, MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District. It's a rezoning from AR to an MPUD, and this item is being continued, request for continuance to the March 14th, 2019, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone here to object? I see no objections. Okay.
Item PC-3 is PDD-19-0691, this is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL-1907, for PAU material. This is also a request for continuance to the March 14th, in this case, local planning agency meeting at 1:30 PM in Dade City.
All right, and the applicant's present? Anyone here to object? See no objections?
And that's the last item for, the last of the items for continuance, before I go through the consent agenda.
So do I have a motion to approve the request for continuances?
So moved.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second.
Can we have a second for continuances of PC-2 and PC-3? On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Following item is PC-4, which is PDD-19-7397, in the name of Long Lake Ranch, MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District, Master Plan Unit Development, rather, TRP Office Florida LLC. This is for a substantial modification to the currently approved conditions of approval and master plan, specifically parcel AB, to allow light industrial-specific use and a variation from the Land Development Code, Section 901.3.1.3.3b, access management analysis, traffic impact study. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as contained in your packet.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? I see no objections. Any questions from up here? All right, any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Following item is PC-5, PDD-19-7391, this is a special exception, name of Anmar Builders, Inc., for a church and daycare center in a PUD planned unit development. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions. I know it says continuance requested, but you do have an agenda memo in front of you with approval with conditions on there.
Okay. Does the applicant hear? You're busy today. Anyone here to object? I don't see any objections. Any further discussion, and what's your motion?
A motion to approve.
A second.
Can I just ask the applicant a question?
Sure.
Was that Barbara that raised her hand?
Yes.
Are you okay proceeding even though there was that glitch in the agenda about it saying continue?
Yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So bearing that in mind, we have a motion to approve, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries.
And the following item, PC-6, PDD-19-7389, would like to remove that from the consent agenda, as there are some folks here who would like to discuss the item.
Okay. And are all the other items on the regular?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
So...
Okay, so we're going to hear PC-6.
Yep. Just gearing it up for you. Okay. PC-6 is PDD-19-7389, in the name of Ryan A. and Elizabeth J. Pryor. This is for a private school, baseball and softball school, in an AR agricultural district. This particular item, the request is to have a baseball and softball school for a, by, which is by appointment only, and for a total of four students on the property at any given time.
Okay.
The parcel is located approximately 320 feet south of the intersection of Hadlock Drive and Elkmont Lane. The existing zoning on the subject site is AR Agricultural Residential, and it's surrounded by several agricultural uses, which include boarding stables, equine veterinarian, some other horse stables, and agricultural uses surrounding it, including site-built homes, you know, single-family dwellings. The existing land use, as you can see, is RES3, three dwelling units per acre. Here's the aerial of the subject site, and here is the site plan that the applicant has I know there will be a lot of questions on this item, there's some folks here to discuss these. I also do want to submit for the record some information that was received by the objecting party, if I may, if you can move to receive and file. And what this is, is a kind of like an analysis that was done regarding trip generation and a comparison of trip generation.
Can I have a motion to receive and file? Yes.
Barbara Willhite, 2523, permit place, Newport Beach, Florida, 34655, for the applicant. I'm not sure if the author of this memo is present, so I think the procedure is, I mean, I don't have any ability to ask this person any questions, so...
So you're correct, Barbara, that you do have the right to cross-examine that witness. I mean, do you want a continuance, so do you have the right to cross-examine that witness?
I don't think that should be on me, because their witness isn't here.
You're asking them?
I continued this matter two weeks already, because their witness couldn't be here last time, so...
Well, it's really up to the Planning Commission. I mean, you're not bound by strict rules of evidence, you don't have, you can disregard it and not receive and file it since the witness isn't here, or you could just take it for what it's worth, and then Barbara can, you know, bring her expert up to challenge the sufficiency of what's in it, but it's really up to the Planning Commission.
What's the difference between that and an email we receive, and the person doesn't come to the meeting?
Well, I'm not sure there is a substantive difference. I mean, Barbara has the right, as the applicant, to cross-examine any witness, that, and I think she's objecting because she doesn't have the right to cross-examine Ms. Terapini. You can do, you know, you can accept the letter for what it is, recognizing that Barbara doesn't have the ability to question it, or you can continue it until Barbara has the ability to question that person. It's really up to the Planning Commission. You're not bound by strict rules of evidence, so you can receive and file it or not. But I understand Barbara's objection is because she doesn't, she can't question the person who wrote it.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, just my opinion, I think that's a very material part of any consideration, is to be able to cross-examine somebody who's supposedly bringing expert evidence here. So that's for the board to consider, whether they want to receive and file it or not.
I mean, I guess the difficulty that I'm having is that, you know, we will receive a ton of emails from people that claim all kinds of things, you know, some legitimate and some not.
I don't, I don't...
You get correspondence from people...
I don't disagree, but in that, but in most cases, they also show up, which means the applicant would have the ability to cross-examine them if the applicant wanted to, and in most cases, the applicant's not objecting to the receipt of that email. I mean, they're...
Right.
So you just receive it, but the applicant isn't filing it. Here we have the applicant filing objection to you receiving that report. So you all have to make a decision about whether you want to receive and file it or not.
May I ask just two questions? Barbara, have you had a chance to read that document?
So it did, was emailed earlier, maybe two hours ago, when I was in a meeting at the county.
So you have not had an opportunity to review it?
I have skimmed through it on my phone.
Okay, I understand that. The second question, was it emailed to whom? Who was the party that received it?
I received, I've been working with the applicant, with the attorney that's going...
But who made copies?
Oh, yeah.
The county did. And was it addressed to the county, or was it addressed to their attorney?
It is addressed to the Planning Commission, so it was sent to me as, Denise, here is this document, and my responsibility is public record and putting it out of the record.
So it's a public record right now. I move to receive and file, please.
Take a second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion on the motion?
I tend to want to vote no, in fact, I will vote no on it because of the time factor involved with it. Usually we get those kinds of things before, that quickly, so I've not had an opportunity to read it myself, so anyway.
Okay.
But I think there's a motion on the floor, and we're going to...
We have a motion on the floor, and if there's no further discussion, let's have a roll call vote.
So just under discussion, I mean, I've sat a long time on boards, and it's the first time I've ever seen someone really object to something like this, so it's a little bit new, but I want to be consistent in the way I have done things, and that is, if somebody wants to put something into the record, that's the reason why I made the motion. Whether or not it carries any weight is a whole nother issue, right? I mean, it's...
Could I add something?
Yeah.
That this isn't just an email, they've attached a resume and claiming it's an expert report. That's where it's different than just an email, or a fact, or somebody writing you a letter. They have a court reporter here, and they're tending to put this in the record as an expert report, and I don't have the ability to talk to that expert, or ask any expert, and so that's where it's really different in this regard.
Okay, I see what, I see what you're saying.
That's where I object, because I have experience being expert witness, and I know that you can't be an expert witness if you're not there to be cross-examined. So that's where I have a problem with it. And we have a motion on the floor.
Well, Ms. Willhite was able to address it, for instance, I'd like to...
I don't think there's how many harm in letting, this is the person that's attempting to proffer the evidence, let her speak.
All right.
Yes, thank you. Yes, Commissioners, we received this literally this morning...
Do I have your name?
Yes, Allison Doucette, with Smoak, Bartlett, Lowpines, and Thompson, 100 North Tampa Street, Suite 2050, Tampa, Florida. This document was received by Ms. Terapini this morning, and we forwarded it to Ms. Willhite the moment that we received it. And the reason for the delay is we were discussing issues with the applicant, and part of, and Ms. Willhite was fully aware that we had retained Ms. Terapini, that's why we had continued the hearing. Unfortunately, she still was unable to make it today, which is included in the memorandum that she was unable to make it. And, you know, this analysis was done essentially, I think, last night by Ms. Terapini, because we were discussing the limitation on the number of trips per day and things like that. Our concern primarily, as you'll hear in our presentation, is with respect to the number of car trips on this very small easement, and that's what Ms. Terapini was addressing, and we didn't know the daily maximum until just yesterday.
Okay, but how do you respond to Ms. Willhite's argument that she has no opportunity to cross-examine Ms. Terapini?
I understand that that's her position. I think that it appears that she also has an expert here today, so obviously, as Mr. Cox indicated, you know, what weight you want to give this analysis versus the analysis that she intends to present is up to the commission, but I think that the rules of evidence are not strict in this case, and it's appropriate to at least put into the record.
Are you trying to qualify her as an expert?
You know, I included her resume just in terms of, in order to make it a complete submission. I think that her tests or her, you know, memorandum here does obviously include references to, you know, the Transportation Institute and things like that with respect to the number of trips that are...
So, but answer my question directly, are you trying to qualify her as an expert?
I believe that she is an expert, yes, and I intend to...
You are attempting to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, you've heard the arguments from both sides. It's really up to the Planning Commission. I think you have leeway either way as to whether you want to receive and file this.
You know, under discussion, I think that if it's, if it's that important to do that, then Ms. Willhite could ask for a continuance on it, so see where it goes, I guess.
I think you've already been down that road, haven't you?
I know, I realize that, I realize that.
All right, anyway, we have a motion, we have a second, and we've had discussion. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Michael Cox?
Yes.
Peter Hansel?
No.
Jamie Girardi?
No.
Roberto Saez?
Yes.
Richard Sumello?
David, I'm voting, so I'm...
He only votes in the event of a tie.
Okay.
Chairman Charles Gray?
No.
So the vote was two to three, with Peter Hansel, Jamie Girardi, and Chairman Charles Gray voting nay. Motion denied.
Okay, so the document is not received and filed.
Again, so this, it was a quick presentation, there are some conditions of approval regarding the number of students on the site at any given time. There are some conditions of approval regarding the days and hours of operation. There are some conditions, four specifically, that discusses required maintenance of the roads. There is a condition regarding allowing unrestricted access to emergency vehicles to the site, and there are some conditions regarding PEA systems, sensory intrusion, decibel levels, which are consistent with the noise ordinance, considering this site as commercial use, not agricultural. And, and conditions regarding not allowing, like, objects, so netting, so that the balls won't fall onto adjacent neighbors' properties. The other conditions are very standard conditions regarding having to sign the acknowledgement form, and so on and so forth. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. I know there will be a lot of questions, so I guess we'll go through those as...
So Denise, can I ask an initial question?
Yes. Sure.
From reading, it sounds like the objection's mostly about the road, so I know staff has conditions dealing with the condition of this road.
Yes.
Who on our staff went out and, the Planning Commission has questions about the condition of the road, and what needs to be done to the road, who would they ask?
We have Will Poon here available to answer questions.
Okay.
I hope he's behind me somewhere.
Thank you, CM. Raise your hand, Will. Okay, so if you have questions about staff's review of the road, that's who you would ask. Thank you.
Okay. Great. So the applicant's present? There we go. You restate your name and address.
Barbara Willhite, 2523, permit place, Newport Beach, Florida, 34655, for the applicant. I have Cynthia Spidel here, who has, wants to run through a quick presentation, PowerPoint. So I'm going to present Cynthia Spidel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Cynthia Spidel, King Engineering, 4921 Memorial Highway, Tampa, and I have been sworn. I'll just give Denise a minute to flip over. So you've met Barbara already. I'm Cynthia, I'm the planner, and do I use this to click? So this is just an aerial, this site is on five acres. Denise gave a description of where it is. It's 320 feet south of the intersection of Hadlock Drive and Elkmont Lane, containing about five acres, and Barbara is handing out her revisions to the conditions of approval. Barbara has reached out to the opposition and made an effort to renegotiate some of the conditions to try to address the opposition's concerns, so you will see a lot of red line changes on the handout that she's presenting to you. So I just wanted to give a couple of shots of here, so you can see, you know, it's heavily wooded around it, and the parking lot there, he's got a very large driveway in the front of his house. So in going through the planning research, the planning analysis for this particular special exception, the county has six criteria that they talk about in their staff report, and I was just going to go through each of the six criteria to sort of expand on that to justify their conditions.
What do you do?
Need a motion to receive and file?
We need a motion to receive and file this, please. Do I have a motion? Motion to receive and file this?
Go ahead.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So the first criterion is the proposed use shall be consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan elements or applicable portions thereof. So the underlying future land use classification of this particular property is RES3, as Denise had pointed out before, and RES3 specifically allows for recreational uses. So residential uses, agriculture, agriculture-related uses, recreation facilities, neighborhood-scale public, and semi-public uses such as central utility systems. So therefore, RES3 specifically calls out recreation facilities, and it doesn't limit that to any specific recreational facility. This is just a rehashing of the flow maps, you can see it's surrounded by RES3 as well. Number two, the proposed use will not create or excessively increase traffic or parking congestion, or otherwise affect public safety. So in working with the opposition, Ms. Willhite and the applicant have agreed to keeping a maximum amount of students of 20 per day, and that will keep the gross trips below the county's de minimis threshold of 50 a day. So it will not trigger a timing and phasing analysis. And there's also a condition, as Denise mentioned, about the road, that our applicant has agreed to sort of bring the road not necessarily to county standard, because the opposition doesn't want it to be paved, but yet they're willing to kind of grade it and do it, and there's a condition that Ms. Willhite will go through with you. Number three, the site upon which the proposed use is to be located has suitable drainage, access, ingress and egress on site parking, loading areas, refuse collection, and adequate utilities available to service the site. So again, Barbara's going to kind of go through some of the revisions to the conditions that she proposed to sort of address the opposition's concerns. The applicant has agreed to them, and there is, since there's no more than four students allowed on the property at one time, his large driveway, and I think I got a picture right here, his large driveway would easily accommodate an additional four vehicles. Number four, the site upon which the special exception is to be located has or will have screening, buffering sufficient to prevent interference with the enjoyment of surrounding properties. Condition number nine, and your handout addresses flyaway balls. There's netting, I have, we have a couple of pictures here of some of the netting that's been proposed, or actually, it's already there. And here's a little, the pole barn, and it's surrounded by nets. And that's 30 feet, the pole barn is 30 feet away from the property boundary on the west side. You can see it there. No, no, do I have a clicker or a pointer here? The circle here?
Can you just kind of...
Oh, yeah, right there, there's the pole barn, and that's at least 30 feet away from the boundary line. So buffering, so in general, we planners, what do we do when we want to know what kind of buffering is required? And obviously, this can be conditioned, can be conditioned, because it's a special exception, but in general, you look to the zoning, AR or AC, and there are no, there is no required buffering between AR and AR or AR and AC zoning. And the pole barn is 30 feet from the side, and I'll just go back to the picture, but you can see it's heavily, whoops, where am I going? How do I get back? Where am I going? I'm going forward, I got to go back.
This is the back.
This is by far, no. So, yeah, as you can see, the site is heavily wooded all around, most of the sides, so we're really just talking about where the pole barn is, we're talking about 2,500 square feet. That's where the pole barn is, where you saw before, where it had the netting surrounded it, and then the baseball diamond here in the corner, and that also had netting and little structure wall around it to prevent the balls from flying over, so... Number five, proposed signs and lighting will not create any adverse glare or adversely affect traffic, safety, economic value, or cause other significant problems on adjoining or surrounding properties. Condition number six, and your handout addresses that. The applicant has also agreed to turn the lighting off at certain times, and Barbara's going to go through that condition as well. There is adequate yard and open space to serve the property upon which the special exception use will be maintained. The subject property is over five acres, it provides more than adequate open space for the proposed use, and according to the applicant's sketch, in which private sessions will occur, is approximately 2,500 square feet out of that five acres. And that's it. You have any questions for me?
Okay. Any questions from up here? Okay, thank you. Barbara?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Cynthia. So I've been, as I do... Yes, thank you. Thank you, Cynthia. So I've been, as I do, work on conditions and try to make them clearer and try to address concerns through conditions. And I've done that, and you have hand those out, but I think what would be helpful is to allow, um, anybody that has concerns, do you, free to hear those concerns, and then we'll come back, and I'll go over the conditions and, um, at that time.
Do you wanna reserve your time?
Barbara, does the opposition have your proposed revisions?
Yes.
Did you? Okay.
Okay. Do you wanna come forward again and restate your name and all that information? You have been sworn, right?
Allison Doucette, from Smolka Barlett, uh, one hundred North Tampa Street, Tampa, Florida. I'm here today on behalf of-
Were you sworn? The chair asked if you were sworn?
Yes, I was sworn. I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you, sir. Um, and commissioners, I'd also like to, I don't, you know, not sure if this is quite appropriate at this time, but in light of our, um, Ms. Terapani's memorandum being excluded, we would request a continuance to allow us to, um, provide that testimony in person. She did have an unavoidable conflict, and we, um, you know, felt like that was a sufficient portion for the record. So I did wanna state that, or request that initially.
Well, my feeling is, is since you were obviously willing to accept it as virtually non-expert testimony because she wasn't here, why don't you just present what she wanted to tell us?
That sounds good to me. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Um, obviously, our, our clients own a, own essentially the entirety of the surrounding property. Mr. and Mrs. Deion sold the house and the five acres to Mr. and Mrs. Pryor. Um, and as part of that sale included within it a thirty-foot-wide easement that travels from Hadlock Road down Elkmont Lane. Elkmont Lane is a private road. It is a fifteen-foot-wide, um, gravel road, and I have pictures that Ms. Deion can authenticate. And you may remember from a prior application that this road is really not intended to service any sort of commercial business. Um, you know, from our research and from what Ms. Terapani, um, you know, has provided to us, an average single-family home has between nine and ten trips per day. That is the standard, um, amount of trips. And that estimated trips per week equals sixty-six. We have done a calculation that under the current proposal of a maximum number of twenty students per day, which I also understand is a maximum of four students on the property at any time, and no less than thirty-minute lessons, but nevertheless, twenty students per day, that totals two hundred and forty trips per week. So that's two hundred and forty, um, trips up and down a fifteen-foot-wide easement, which our clients have provided. In addition, there's another private easement on the Hadlock Drive portion, and one of the other, um, neighbors is also here today, and I think will be speaking. And so from our perspective, that is just entirely too much. We understand that the intensity has been dropped from what Mr. Pryor initially intended, but unfortunately, the easement just can't handle that sort of traffic. Um, it's not paved. It is not, um, there's no, I believe there's no intent to widen the easement. And so we're looking at a fifteen-foot-wide piece of land that, you know, twenty students' parents or, you know, students themselves are gonna be driving in and out of on a daily basis. Um, our clients own a horse farm that surrounds it. They regularly cross over the easement with their horses. You know, there's a tremendous amount of dust that is generated from this type of operation through the traffic in and out, and that impacts our client's property as well. So from our perspective, the property is just not intended, that easement is not intended, and it's a burden on the easement to allow, um, this number of trips.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So if your complaint is that the road is insufficient for their school, why are you opposed to it being paved?
You know, the, because the, the easement is not in, it's not intended to be a thoroughfare for such a business, and I don't think that there's anything in the easement that, you know, requires our client to consent to paving, and they don't want it to be paved. It's my understanding that the additional easement on Hadlock Road, which is the same, um, you know, fifteen-foot wide, is also, you know, the other neighboring parties that own fifteen feet on either side of that easement don't agree to have it paved as well. Um, I understand that, you know, it might sound like most people would want the road to be paved, um, that they're using. However, that's just not the case here, and they don't consent to any paving on the road. I think the concern there, to be frank, is that if the road is paved, then people driving down it will drive even faster than they currently do, and it's already a safety hazard from their perspective.
Let me just follow up on that. Uh, I don't think, um, there's any requirement to pave the road. I don't think the county's requiring them to pave the road. And I, I think, uh, um, they're willing to improve the road so that it won't be a hazard, from my understanding. And also, I have a question about the, the number of trips that you, uh, indicated, because I, I, when I spoke to the county about this, I believe the number of trips they indicated to me were substantially less than what you just said.
I, and I think in, um, Ms. Spidell's test, or testimony just now, she said that they had estimated fifty trips, and our estimate is sixty-six. Um, and I may be wrong about that, I'm just going off of memory. You know, our, our number of trips is assuming that, and this has been historically, and Ms. Deion can testify to this, this has been historically the way that, um, he had operated previously before he had approval, was that parents drive in, they drop off their children, and then drive out again. And so it's a, it's more than just a single in and out, it's actually in, out, and out, um, for each student.
Well, again, my experience is with my own children, is when I take my children, I don't leave. I leave and stay there with them and watch them. Though I don't think that would necessarily be true.
Perhaps not. I think that even if, um, you know, perhaps all, not all parents would do that. That's historically what they've seen, and that's what we've estimated.
You know, there may not be four children showing up every time. I mean, you may not have twenty people every day.
That's true. You know, I think that the problem is fundamentally that this road just cannot accommodate really, you know, the maximum of twenty. I, um, assume that maximum is tied to what that they need in order to operate their business there. And I think that, um, from our client's perspective, you have to assume that he's going to fill up that, um, those twenty, twenty students a day, you know, most days. And if that's the case, even if it's fifty trips, that's fifty trips, or, you know, in, you know, fifty trips on a fifteen-foot-wide road that our clients, um, don't agree to expand in any way. And it's my understanding that the applicant doesn't intend to widen it anyway. And so our objection-
Because you don't want him to widen it.
We, we do not want to widen the easement either. And I don't think there's any requirement, nor have they shown that they, they could widen the easement if that was part of what the county would require in order to have it be a safe ingress and egress for this many people. I'll tell you that in order to, for two cars to pass on this road at the same time, they can't. One has to pull off entirely to the side. And I do have pictures, um, that Ms. Deion has taken, if that would be helpful for you all to visualize the actual easement that we're discussing.
Okay.
And I can hand those-
Have a motion to receive and file?
I'll move to receive and file.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries? Go ahead.
I have a question, wouldn't you? You have a chance.
Any other questions, or?
You'll see that the first picture is the easement looking down towards, um, the subject property is at the end of this on the right. The second picture is making the turn from Hadlock Drive, um, turning right onto Elkmont Lane. And you'll see that this is actually, um, where that barricade is. That's actually a little bridge of sorts with a fourteen-foot-wide, um, easement. And then the last two pictures were actually, um, Ms. Deion would also, or could also come and testify that Mr. Pryor's been operating without, um, this actual se- special exception during this period of time, and that we have come, you know, issues in terms of who would be enforcing compliance with the special exception. I think, Mr. Hansel, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, I do.
Yes.
I'm a little confused.
Yes.
It, on this, uh, handout that we have from the county, and I'm sure you have a copy of it, on page two of six, at number four, it reads in essence that the surrounding area is characterized by horse riding schools, horse training, riding lessons, and camps.
Mm-hmm.
And there's also a sports medicine, or, a sports medicine veterinarian who practices a commercial horse breeding facility there. How does that not impact the community too? Is it kinda like you want this, but they can't have that? I mean-
So I think it's important-
What's defined by surrounding areas?
Right. And I think that the county can probably address what they defined as the surrounding area. Those, and my client can tell you that those properties that are mentioned are actually on the main road primarily. And so this property, uh, is actually, you know, much further than that, off of Hadlock Road and then onto a-
Yeah, but in the past, and sometimes I don't remember things really clearly, but this time I kinda do, where the, some of the opponents to this indicated that they, they do in fact live near his property, they raise the horses, and they offer riding lessons.
I think-
I assume the surrounding area is like the immediate area, or is the surrounding area ten miles away. I, so maybe we can clarify that.
Yeah, and it might be that the county can clarify that. I'm not sure what they were looking at in terms of the surrounding area. I know that, I think that some of the neighbors do offer, you know, intermittent, you know, riding lessons here and there, but it's not a, you know, an actual sort of commercial operation in, in the sense that this is.
But they do ride, they do charge a fee for those, those lessons, correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
So therefore, it would be considered commercial?
Right, yeah, and in fact, right, and it, but not necessarily. I think it's on a, you know, one-off basis. But however, I think that my client could actually probably answer that question, if you want me to, um, bring her up here. Um, and so that is-
Is that your testimony now? Are you finished?
I, I am finished, however-
I just wanna give a chance for everybody to appear to ask questions if they have a question.
I have a question too, but I wasn't sure she was done. And I'm not sure if it's for you or your client, but it looks like the area right now is being used for some agricultural operations, including horses. So if your argument is that the road is too narrow for this school, how are the horse trailers? I mean, the horse trailer's gonna be even wider than a car. So if two horse trailers are passing each other on this road, what are they doing?
I assume that if two trailers are passing, um, each other, that one would have to pull off. However, that's, you know, this, that's not an everyday occurrence, and, uh, you know, it, there are horses on this property, but it's not, it's not a well-traveled road. It's intended for a single-family residence, and then there is a barn.
But it, but it's, from the picture you're showing, it looks like there's a grassy area on either side of the easement. So presumably, the road is not stopping those horse trailers from passing each other.
No, it's not stopping. It, it's on to an unmaintained, uh, basically right-of-way, some of which, if you look at the second picture, is actually water and wetlands. So it's not actually feasible to, to pass on the side, um, or safe.
Okay, where are you saying it's not feasible?
Uh, the second page of the little stack I handed is, is a picture looking towards Elkmont Lane, as around the corner. And then you have the little barricade, that is water directly next to it.
So, so if you had a horse trailer coming from either direction at that location, what would the horse trailer do?
Well, you would have to stop. There would be an issue. I mean, I think that that's-
Well, how are they doing it now, I'm asking, because there's horse trailers out there now. What are they doing?
If you wanna, can you come up, Miss Deion?
We, we can, well, let me, before you do that, before you bring anybody else up-
Yes.
Um, are there any other questions for this person?
This is my only question, so-
Okay, is anybody else-
For this person.
I have a question.
Well, I have clarification.
Yeah.
This, this photo is, is, if I was gonna cherry pick something, this is a photo I cherry picked because we do, is you got that stream going across there, which by nature is gonna make the road consolidate or become narrow at that point. But if you go beyond it or before it, it, it seems to be much wider. So I just wanna say that you are presenting something here that is-
Okay, well, I'm asking a question that will get to that issue, so let's, let her answer the question.
Well, and I think if I just may address that comment, obviously, um, we're taking a picture of the actual condition of the road in one place where all of these, uh, individuals would have to drive by. And so I think that, you know, our position is to approve something that would require a significant amount of people to drive off of the side of a unpaved road is our, you know, is our concern, that it's a burden on that easement that's not maintained for that purpose.
My question is, how are the horse trailers doing it now?
Okay, um, very few. Uh, my, nine zero zero two Elkmont Lane, Wesley Chapel, um-
Have you been sworn?
I'm sorry?
Were you sworn?
Yes, she was sworn.
Yes.
Were you, did you raise your hand to swear?
Yes, I was. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you very well.
And your name, please.
And my name is Amanda Deion, and very rarely, we don't have horse trailers going in very often or out. People show grace, um, and we've never had a problem. The problem that we've had with the issue that we're discussing now is cars coming and going, and they do drop off and leave. I've witnessed this over the past few years.
Let me, let me just get to my very specific question, but I need to answer. This picture that was shown to us, okay, shows the easement, and it shows a stream that presumably a lot, doesn't allow you to pass right where the stream is. So my question is, if you had two cars approaching at this location, would one just wait till the other crosses?
Correct.
Okay, that's my question.
Correct.
All right, you've answered. Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm thinking, I think that's my entire presentation. I mean, I think I can have, um, Ms. Deion come up and testify as to the things I proffer that she would say, but I think that our, uh, presentation is clear that it's our position that two cars can't fit on this easement, it's a private easement, and unpaved road. Um, and there's no, you know, right to upgrade, pave, maintain, or otherwise that would cre- you know, eliminate the issue. Um, and then again, the, the last two pictures of that package are just showing recent operations, um, out of compliance by, by the applicant, so, thank you. And any other questions, I'm happy to address.
I have a question for staff.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, you do have a question, Mike? Go ahead.
So if they're operating right now, is, has any of the operations that they are having, is it having an effect on the true agricultural, uh, purposes that are going on there with the horses and such?
I will, I will let Ms. Deion, if she can come up and address that, you know, her daily, 'cause she is the one that's operating out there, um, with her horse farm. And I think the answer to that is yes, but I'll let her answer her question.
Yes, yes, we do. We have considerable dust. Um, you have people that, one, don't live out there, so you don't have a lot of respect level at times. Most people are good, but we've had cars hauling in there. I have a lady out there that has her horse and was almost kicked in the head from a speeding car going down there. It's, we keep, like to keep it a little rough. One, the horses don't want the pavement, and two, it slows down the speeding cars, which they do do. And I have witnessed, many people have witnessed, and it has become quite a hindrance.
Has there been any issue with noise or anything disturbing the animals?
We just hear the baseballs clinking. Um, the light that he had up there, along with the floodlights he has on his house, are direct, directly towards our properties and the surrounding, and it lights up like a Christmas tree. Um, the dust is just phenomenal. We have to go out there and hose it down last time, as the cars go by. Stand there and hose it to eliminate the dust, which is very good for the horses as well. It's, we cross that road, that's about the time, excuse me, that we feed, we cross with horses, and it's a continual pass of cars going. Whether there's twenty cars, it's gonna be four coming in, and I'm looking at four every half hour. That's four in, four out. It's gonna be like a freeway. I have witnessed it. I've witnessed it. And we are the ones that are out there. I don't know if you gentlemen have been out there or not. It's a very, the scope of that easement, it is not a road, it is a private easement, it does not, it, it's just, it doesn't work. It just doesn't work. And that's all I can say, is from what we've witnessed, and we've experienced, and we've lived.
Can I ask you a question?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, unless you're done. Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done, thank you.
When you sold Mr. Pryor the property, did you put anything in the easement that limited the scope of what could go on?
Note, just the standard easement that went in the clause when we sold the house, as it normally does.
So you didn't say it could only, but you can only have so many trips on it, or you can only use it for certain use?
It would be just a standard use, I guess, with the real estate, the real estate agent, the broker and the real estate agent handled that.
But my question is, did you restrict the property in any way as to what could use the road when you sold the property?
No, seeing fit that he would be using it as a residential.
Did you, did you deed restrict it to residential when you sold it?
It is residential.
I'm asking whether you, as a private landowner, when you sold the property, did you deed restrict it to residential?
I, I'm not sure the question, maybe Caitlin, you can answer that.
Does your lawyer know the answer to the question?
I think that that's a, probably a legal question that I'd be better to answer. I don't believe, there were no deed restrictions included within, um, the transaction. I don't believe, there were no deed restrictions included within the transaction. I have a copy of the deed that we can enter, if you'd like, it's also, I can give the recording information. If the deed is simply, as Ms. Dionne said, included as part of the, or the easement is included as part of the-
Well, if you're telling me there was no deed restriction, that, so, if you're telling me there was no deed restriction on use, and there was no restriction on the use of the easement, that answers my question. Is that your, what you're saying?
Right, there was no separate deed restriction, correct.
And was there any restriction on how many trips could use the easement?
There's no specific restriction on the easement. I think that would obviously be a legal argument, maybe perhaps for another day, but it already is in terms of what was intended.
I'm just asking, I'm asking, in your private transaction, were there any restrictions? That's all, if you're saying no, okay.
It was a, it was a standard ingress and egress easement contained within the deed.
Okay, you've answered my question.
So I have another question. So in your private transaction, what did you believe the buyer was gonna use the property for?
For agr- ah, excuse me, for residential. Once we were knee-deep in contracts, we found out otherwise by websites, and that's when we came concerned, and there was nothing we could do about it at that point. So Mr. Pryor opened a facility, we've been through this before a couple of years ago, and he just proceeded to open on his own with no permits, no permission, and went hog wild. We had cars up and down all day, the dust, we had litter attitudes.
So, so when you were in the process of selling, is when you realized?
I was in, I was in contract and could not get out when we discovered what was going on.
I find that, I find that, I find that a little hard to believe.
We had legal representation.
Same lawyer you have with you today?
No, 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 no. Tony Woodward was at the closing, for the closing.
Okay.
Ms. Dionne, I got just a question for clarification. Can you clarify, what, what do you use your property that you did not sell for?
Our property that we have now, our existing property?
Correct.
Yes, we have horses out there, we have racehorses that we've bred. So we have babies out there that are, and mares that are weaned and are weaning, and we have two at the racetrack that are gone, so.
I mean, do you offer riding lessons?
No, we do not.
Do you board any horses? They're all personal use?
We have two people, we have two people that come out and train our babies. We do not, no money's exchanged. It's just where the horses can play and live peacefully and quietly.
David, I'm looking at the deed and there's no restriction on the easement, just for clarification.
The question was answered.
Yeah, just wanna make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I have a question for staff, but I don't have any more questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, let us know if you have any other questions.
Go ahead, David, for staff.
Denise, I, I guess there's a dispute about whether there's, this use is gonna generate fifty trips or sixty-seven trips. Does, do you or Will have a position on that?
I believe we have someone here who can answer that question.
Is that Will?
Amir can answer the question.
Okay. Amir, can you come up and answer that question? Will, you might as well come up too, 'cause I have a follow-up question, so let's just get it all.
You have a seat, sir.
Okay, I'll wait, just don't forget me.
Forget who?
Forget me.
Oh.
I'm one of the property owners.
Who wrote that? Twenty trips. Good for you.
For trip generation calculation, we have assumed twenty students per day.
Amir, I'm sorry, could you just give your full name?
Okay, this is Amir Jamali, transportation planner with current planning.
Thank you.
Okay.
Pull the microphone up a little bit.
There you go.
There you go.
There you go, now.
Amir Jamali, transportation planner with current planning.
Okay.
For trip generation, we have assumed twenty students per day, which is the maximum, twenty students they have supposed.
Hmm.
And each student has one trip entering the property and one trip exiting the trip.
Mm-hmm.
And per day, it would be forty trips per day.
Forty?
Yeah.
You, you've assumed forty?
Yeah.
Okay, so my follow-up question is, if you assume forty trips per day, and, and you require the road to be improved in accordance with condition four, which I believe staff recommended, it requires that the property will be stabilized using compacted subgrade specification in accordance with latest DOT specs, section 160 says stabilizing. I'm not sure I know what that means, okay, but my question is, if the road is improved to that condition, is your, what is your opinion about whether that can accommodate forty students per day? I don't know if you need to answer that, or Will needs to answer that, so I'm okay with whoever wants to answer.
I think we, to me, because it's not a public road, it's a private, as long as it's stabilized and the fire truck can use that road, for us is enough.
So you believe if they comply with condition four, it'll accommodate forty, forty trips a day?
Yeah.
Okay, that answers my question.
So, so I have a question on the, on the trip generation then. So twenty students maximum, in and out forty trips. You did not take into consideration that maybe there's parents out there that may not be as engaged as Mr. Gray is in the development of their child, and that they just wanna drop them off and leave?
Because it's thirty-minute session classes or something like that.
Well, it says minimum, right? Minimum of thirty minutes?
Yeah.
So, so they could be there for two hours?
Yeah.
Not if they wanted to have an ex group.
Yeah. Based on the IT manual, actually we have a rate, based on the IT manual gener- trip generation, and they have a three point zero seven per members. It's not the, it's daily students, it's members, it's total registered students. And if we use that rate, it would be the same. I don't know what is the total members.
And let me ask you something, I understand what Mr. Cox or Commissioner Cox just say. You are basing a manual in a black and white. We need, we are trying to be realistic here. When I say realistic is, you have twenty students, you just use the same standards for every single student, that it's just going to be just one single trip in and out. I think we need to factor a percent of those students that the pa- the parents will drop the students, go back to their activities, and they're going to go back to pick up the kids. That is all, I believe that we need to do that.
Keep in mind, that is a rough estimate, and it's a maximum, because they don't have every day, they have, they don't have twenty students per, each single day.
I think they, okay.
Let me ask a follow-up question, 'cause it may clear this up. So, let's assume that it's what the opponents say, that it's sixty-seven trips per day, okay? If they comply with condition four, do you think the road can accommodate sixty-seven trips a day?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And just as a comment, back to what you're questioning, Robert, I understand what you're saying. My, my point was, is that I don't know if they have twenty, but that's the maximum they can have. They might have ten.
I'm pretty sure the goal is to keep it consistent.
And if they're gonna, if they're gonna, if they're gonna make adjustments, you know, on trips, because somebody might not decide to stay there, then they also have to make adjustments for the number of students that might not show up.
I understand.
You could go on and on.
Let me ask you another question, when you mentioned that, and maybe David, you can answer this. Okay, they, what we see right now is they're going to have a facility that allows twenty students to practice there. How we can, in time, be sure that they're going to have just twenty students? Do we have any kind of?
So if, if somebody in the area found that they were generating more than twenty students per day, that would be a violation of their conditions, and staff could either initiate a code enforcement action and cite them, or they could bring the special exception back for revocation. Either, we have two ways of enforcing it. So probably they'd be cited first, and if, then if it was repeated, we'd probably bring it back for revocation of this, of the special exception.
Thank you.
But we operate generally on a complaint basis. I don't know that a code, a code enforcement officer's gonna sit out there unless somebody calls them and says, hey, we think they're generating more than twenty.
Okay. Any other questions for Amir? All right, I think we had one other person that wanted to speak before there, there were two other people that wanna speak, okay? Who would like to go first?
You, you go first.
I'll go last.
Okay.
Don't worry.
Well, you won't be last, 'cause the attorney for the other side will be last.
Okay.
Good afternoon, I was sworn in. My name is Fred Byrd, two-nine-four-three-nine, Hadlock Drive.
Okay.
My wife and I live on the corner of Hadlock and Elkmont Lane. We've lived there since nineteen eighty-five, and I'm not even sure really where to start. Talking about code enforcement a moment ago, have you guys done any research on this? Code enforcement basically lived out there in this area from all the problems we had with the prior baseball ranch. They came out, when they were operating illegally, they were asked to stop, they continued, they were asked to stop, they continued. There were numerous violations. I don't, I'm, I'm assuming you guys saw all that. I'm not quite sure why we're talking about code enforcement, 'cause code enforcement was out there and it didn't stop them before. So I, I, that, that part I just really don't understand. And as far as fixing the road, we own fi- we have five acres that are all usable. We're right in the middle, six hundred and sixty foot of Hadlock Drive. We give fifteen foot on the easement. Technically, that's our property. I don't want Mr. Pryor fixing that road. Reason being is, before, per code enforcement's request, Mr. Dionne and myself fixed all along our part of the road, and the code enforcement asked us to do that to keep the peace, and we did. It lasted about four or five days, continued to drive up and down the road fast. I've got pictures of my grass here, even when the road was fixed, they drove in my grass in the part of the easement to tear it up. Now, what you were talking about, if there's two cars coming, if two cars have to go by or two horse trailers, that's fine. I have no issue with that. But when somebody does it intentionally, stops their truck, honks the horn, and I won't use the, the gesture that was used to get my attention, which you could only imagine, and spin out in the grass to try to get my attention, that's what we've been putting up with. As we continue to talk about them doing all this, they were denied before, and the question was asked, if he's allowed four people, who's gonna monitor that? Nope, we're, we're gonna be back to what we were doing before. Calling code enforcement, having code enforcement go out there, it's gonna be the circle, the tail wagging the dog like it was before. I, I, I don't, I don't understand exactly where we're going with all this. And as far as their five acres, all five acres of their property is not usable. Half of it's back in a Cypress Head, and part of it's a pond. So, you know, we're talking about usable five acres on their property? I'm not sure if anybody's been out there to took, to take a look at it, but it's not all five acres are not usable. Can I, I've got some pictures to show where our house is in relationship to the easement. How do, how do I, how do I show that to you?
You can file them, you can receive and file them.
Okay, who do I give them to?
Just pass them right over here.
You have a motion to receive and file them.
A motion, a second, do we have a second?
A second.
And for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Girls are gonna need a copy too, over there.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
So, as you, as you can see, looking at this, my house is there to the left. It's not, it's not a great picture, but you can at least get an idea how close our house is to the easement. And what Ms. Dionne was talking about before, when it's dry and the amount of traffic they came by, if we leave our bedroom window open, our bedroom is covered with dust. And I asked Mr. Pryor, you know, can you guys please slow down? Once again, I won't repeat the language that was used, we would have to stand out there with our hose, wet the easement down, or put the sprinkler to keep the dust from coming in our house. Now, as far as the people coming in and out, you know, I, I'd asked them, I, I love baseball. I grew up playing baseball, I coached baseball, I told Mr. Pryor that when he moved out there. I love baseball, I have nothing against baseball, I think it's great for kids, teaches them numerous things. There's a proper place for it. This is an equine community. Like I said, we've been there since nineteen eighty-five. It's not a road. This was a cow, this was a cow pasture when we moved out there. And it was a dirt road that over the years, we've brought in fill, shell dirt, whatever, built it up. And there's always been common courtesy, when there's two people coming, you stop. That bridge that we're talking about, Three Culverts, that's been built over the years, everybody else, when there's a car coming, you stop. Numerous times, I've been going over the bridge with my granddaughter in the car, or my wife with me, and the people coming in, go to the baseball school, still try to come over the bridge at the same time. You try and explain to them what's going on, they don't wanna hear it. Everybody else, when they see a car coming, or a horse trailer coming, you stop, you pull up on the side, you let them go by. They don't understand that. Tried to explain that to them, and his comment was, you don't own the road, you're not the road sheriff, you can't tell me what to do. I said, well, you're right, I can't. Just, I'm trying to ask you for a little bit of common courtesy out here. All I'm trying to get a point across is what we've put up with, and what, where this is going. It's not, it's not as cut and dry as everybody thinks this is. And the, the numerous pictures that I've got here, if you'll see tire tracks in the easement here, that's, that's where Mr. Pryor has gone on my part of the easement, on the grass when it's wet, sat there, honked the horn for me to come outside, and spun, spun the tires on the easement. It's not somebody going, moving out of the way for somebody coming, he does it intentionally. So, I, I, I think I've pretty much-
Mr. Chairman's time.
Okay. That covered everything you said. All right, is there any questions? Do we have any questions from up here?
Oh, I just wanna, I wanna sneak one thing. So, six hundred and sixty feet of that easement, fifteen foot in is mine. We're talking about having Mr. Pryor improve the road, that's, that's my road. How can Mr. Pryor improve my road? I don't understand that.
Well, I don't know what-
That's, that's a legal issue between you and Mr. Pryor.
I own the road, I'm supposed to maintain it. The easement says, all I have to provide is, is a legal, a, a way in and out, which there is a way in and out. If he wants to fix the road, you guys are talking about letting him put fill in there or whatever, not on mine. He can go up to the front where, where the, where the horse farmer owns, and there's holes that deep up there.
You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay. Condition four requires him to improve the road. If you think that he doesn't have the legal right to improve it, that's up to you to take him to court and say, you don't have the right to improve it. If he can't comply with that condition, his, his special exception presumably would get revoked. So if you don't think he has the legal, legal right, he's represented to staff-
Mm-hmm.
That he has the legal right to improve that, to comply with condition four.
How would he have a legal right to improve my road?
It's, it gets to-
My property.
And I don't know the scope of your easement, I don't have your easement in front of me, but there could be a common law right to improve the easement.
Hmm, no. Hmm, no.
Okay, sir, are you a lawyer?
Nope.
Okay, so, why don't you let the lawyers resolve that? If you think he doesn't have the legal right to, to improve it, then he can't comply with-
So he's going to cost me more money and more time away from work.
But there's a lawyer right there representing your neighbor, maybe she knows the answer.
Well, typically, easements are provided in these types of circumstances, so that everybody can access their property.
Which we have, which we have.
And that means that you don't have, you know, you don't own all the rights to that property. That's why it's an easement. That's why the power company has an easement around properties, because so they can get on that property. You may not want them there, but they need to get there. Just like everybody has a right to get to their property, so. This easement, you know, every, every property has what's called a bundle of rights. But you may not own all those bundles, because some of it might be an easement, which gives somebody else certain rights. And I think what David is saying is that we, we aren't attorneys, we, we're not going to decide whether you have those rights or they have those rights. That's something that somebody else has to decide. All we can do is say, if you want to use this facility, this is what you have to do.
Can I say one more thing about the easement? So we've been out there since 85. Mr. Wells is going to get up and speak now. And Mr. Deion and myself, over the years, with a couple of the people, we've worked on that easement, we filled it in, we, we've had it filled in, rebuilt, or whatever. And we've all been very courteous. And the main reason I don't want that easement smooth is the amount of traffic and the speed that his people use, including himself, driving up and down that road. That's my concern. If he, if he, if he has, you're, you're right, I, I don't do this for a living, I apologize, I sell paper for a living. This is totally out of my element. But I'm just trying to use what I've experienced in the past. We had that easement, so it was nice and smooth, 30, 40 miles an hour down easement, and that's when he would tell me, you don't own this, you can't tell me what to do. I'd say, you're exactly right, I can't, I can just ask you, please, please slow down. That's, that's my concern about having all those holes filled in out there. Because I, it's happened before, since he's been out there since 2016, we've filled those holes in numerous times. Right now, hits the holes when he bounces, I mean, that's, that's his concern, not mine. But if that road is smooth, we're going to have people doing 34, 30 miles an hour down that little easement. It's not safe. Like I said, they've got horses, we've got a granddaughter, there's, there's, there's animals out there, there's dogs and cats. It's not that type of, it's not a subdivision, it's not a paved road.
Chairman just asked me whether we can require speed bumps. I would say-
Speed, I didn't say speed bumps.
Legally-
I asked him the question.
So legally, you could, but the issue is that condition four, as proposed by the applicant, does not allow them to pave it, so I don't- Maybe of a practical problem, and it's kind of an engineering question, can you even install speed bumps on a dirt road, and I'll ask staff to... Do you know the answer to that? I, I don't even know if you could, from-
They're called potholes.
Well, what I, yeah, I think, we've given you a lot of time, so we'll try to answer some of your questions. Thank you. I think, what, I guess what my question is, is that there's no reason why the surface has to be flat. Is that correct?
Well, what you could, you, in theory, if, if you don't want the road, if you want it to remain bumpy, then you could just not impose condition four. Condition four says they will stabilize the road, compact it, and, and I guess all that we'll address. If they comply with condition four, would the road be smooth?
Will it be smooth? P, current planning? Will it be smooth? Well, if you compact it to the standards specified here from the OT, it more likely will be smooth. If you could, however, it is a dirt road. So, putting a speed bump there also, probably won't stay there, because it's subject to movement, and also, you know-
Does it, the speed bump would erode over time if you tried to put one in?
Highly likely, yes.
So-
You could put a concrete speed bump there, even on a dirt road though, right?
It's like, yeah, I mean, it's like pouring curb, and, you know, and so forth, and dirt, and so forth. But I mean, I've actually driven out there myself, on a different manner to that site, and it is bumpy, I mean, I had a sedan, come, you know, and so, I mean, it's, it is accessible. And I also witnessed a horse trailer was being pulled out there too, and they were riding over it. I wasn't going excessive speed, because there were some bumps through the road, and there were, so-
So-
It is accessible as it is in this current condition.
Is it accessible to emergency vehicles in its current condition?
When I was out there a year and a half ago, at that time, yes, I would say yes.
So I, I think, Mr. Chair, to answer your question, if you want, if the planning commission wanted the road to stay in its existing condition, then you would presumably strike condition four, which requires them to improve it. I don't know if the applicant is okay with that, but I mean, that, that would be your solution.
So they'd still be able to use it, even if they didn't do condition four?
Well, I think staff was intending to impose condition four, so that it would be more passable to the patrons of the school. But presumably, if you don't want it to be that passable, I guess you could strike condition four.
Okay.
They still have to comply with condition five, which makes, they have to make it accessible to emergency vehicles, but I don't, I think emergency vehicles can get through on roads that normal cars cannot.
Right.
I have a question, maybe for staff, or I don't know if it's for you, Will, or not, but maybe my recollection was wrong, but I thought condition four came out of the last time you guys were here asking for more people, because the owners were worried that the additional traffic is going to degrade the road, so they wanted you guys to may be responsible for maintenance of the road. Is that not true? Okay, I apologize, I misunderstood.
Sorry your ass, now, aren't you?
My understanding, my, my understanding of condition four is that it was staff's attempt to make the road more passable. Is that accurate, Will?
Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you, Will, I appreciate it. Any questions for Will? All right, Barbara, I think, oh, it's, oh yeah, I forgot you.
Okay, can, can everyone hear me now? My name is Dan Wells. I live at 8930 Elkmont Lane, Wesley Chapel, okay? I've lived there since 1987. The driveway that we're discussing is a little over a half a mile long. To clear what, to clear up the right of way issue, at the front portion of this road, the easement is 70 feet. On the rest of it, all the way back to my house, is 30 feet, not 15, okay? Now, I have pictures, too. I don't have enough for everybody. But I have pictures that I took this morning, okay? That shows that my road, and that my 30-foot easement, is now been restricted to 15 feet, because somebody wanted to put cement blocks on the road, so that I can't use the 30 feet. So therefore, some of the easement has to be, you have to drive on the grass, on friends, okay? Pardon me?
I'm moving to receive and file your photos.
If you want to hand them to, they can share-
Who do you want me giving to?
Uh, why don't you start down there, we'll pass them down. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so who put the cement blocks on your road?
Uh, I think Andy Deion, Andy and Amanda. They blocked the easement because they didn't want us using the 30 feet. Okay, now, I also have my deed, okay, which shows what my easement is on mine. And I also have the deed for the one down in front, that shows the 70-foot easement, okay? So I don't know where we're getting with this only 15 feet access. We're not, okay? Do you want those? Those papers to show the easement, do you need that?
If you want us to receive and file them, that's fine.
It's up to you. It's up to you, we're happy to do it if you'd like to give it to us.
Pardon me?
It's up to you. If you'd like us to receive them, we will.
Sure, you can, so that way you can see the same thing that everyone else is looking at. Let me find it.
Mike, any motion? Move to receive and file. Do I have a second? All in favor? Okay, I just want you to focus in here now, and try to let us know what it is, your point you wanted to make here for us.
Okay. The road that was, that's there now, okay, I built that road. I built it in 2002. I paid $12,000 to put the asphalt down on this road, because it was all mud, and nobody could get access, nobody could, everybody had to park up front, and then walk back to their house, because it was strictly mud, watered mud, okay? So, I worked for an asphalt company as an electrician, and so they gave me a deal on some rap. So I had 28 trucks brought out. And I made this road, so everybody there had access to this road, okay? Now Fred and Gail, they were, you know, great people, they gave me money. They gave me a little over $1,000, as what they thought was their share, which was good. They offered me more, and I refused it. Andy and Amanda, I think, gave me $200. And they were always going to give me more, but it, it never did come. So-
Sir, could you focus on what your position is about the school? Because you're, you're going to run out of time here, so.
Yeah.
What is your position about the school, and whether they should or should not improve the road?
Okay, the school, okay, I have seven children. Andy and, Andy and, and Amanda had two children, the Byrds had two children. We all, all our kids went out to the, down to the bus stop, went to school, used that road. We all had pets. There was never any child, any danger, in any kind of danger. No pet ever got hit or run over. So as far as any kind of animal being in jeopardy, or any, any person, any kid being in jeopardy, is, no, that's ludicrous. Yeah, it's, it's, no. I, I've been associated with the Quail Hollow, Waitman, and Wesley Chapel School.
Okay, sir, but what is your position about the, the, the baseball school that's before us today? What's your position on that?
Are you pro or against?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm anything that helps kids. I don't care if it's a baseball, or cheerleading, or what it is, I don't care. I'm for anything that helps kids. Okay?
Right.
So I, I'm for anything that helps kids.
Okay.
Okay? I don't have anything against the Deions or the Byrds. I get along fine with them, as far as I know, maybe not after today, but-
So you're in favor of the special exception approval, then?
Pardon me?
So you're in favor of the special exception approval?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Any questions?
Is that it? You're going to fix my road now?
Yeah, I'm going to be out there and pave it tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, another thing too, you mentioned something about speed bumps, okay? If you fix that road, and, and you put, well, if you put speed bumps on it, on it right now, any kind of speed bumps, it's going to move. As soon as it rains, it's going to move, you okay? It's tearing up, it would tear up my vehicles, okay? The holes that's there now are tearing up my vehicles, okay? And I've already checked, and I have the legal right to grade that road if I want to, which I have. Okay? And I will if I need to.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate you, and I think we had one more raising our hand in earnest. You could have your name and address, please, and you've been sworn?
No, I have not.
Okay, well, let's get you sworn.
Okay. Yes.
Okay, and your name and address?
My name is Caitlin Smith, and I live at 29, or I don't live, that we're building a house right now, currently on the road. Our new address is 29400 Hadlock Drive. And we will be residing out there come August of this year. I own a part of that easement, and I am, I do not consent to any improvements being done. And if that's something that has to be done in order for the special exception to be approved, and for him to, to start operating, I do not consent that. And I will not be allowing that, so if that's something that you guys should consider in order to approve that special exception, I would implore you to visit that.
Well, I think, I, well, just to clarify that, I think that our, our attorney has already said that that's a legal issue, something that we can't decide.
Right.
To be clear, all, all the county's conditions require is for the school to make improvements to the road, if the planning commission imposes those conditions. They did not address whether he has the prior right to do so or not.
And that's fine, and it shouldn't be up-
That's up to a judge to decide.
Right, it shouldn't be up to us to file a lawsuit, and we shouldn't be litigating that, about that as well, cross board.
Well, the applicant has asserted he has the right to improve the road. In fact, one of his neighbors also just stood up and said the same thing. I don't know if he does.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is the attorney-
The applicant has asserted he has the right to improve it, one of his neighbors just stood up and said he has the right to improve it. I don't know the answer to that question.
That's what I'm bringing up.
But it's not really-
German to what we're doing.
It's not german to what the county will or will not impose. The county's just going to say, do you, or do you not have to improve it? If he doesn't have the right to improve it, then he can't comply with the condition.
Correct. Also, another thing to think about, too, is I also grew up out there, I lived out there my whole entire life. I've never seen as much traffic as I have out there since Mr. and Mrs. Pryor have moved out there. And to just reiterate, we were in the middle of that contract, or that house, when we did find out about the situation that was at hand. This, this is why we're all here today. It is a huge burden on our easement. We've all collectively come together throughout the years, as Dan Wells mentioned, to go ahead and try and prove that road. I know Dan Wells has spent a lot of money, so has Fred and Gail, and the other people that live out there that aren't even here today. There were speed bumps put up, and they were taken out. That is not something that was taken well to.
You put speed bumps on, on the dirt road?
Yes, they were done with asphalt millings, and they were removed with a tractor. To also build on that, so the road is passable, yes. Now, a portion of that road that you saw with the bridge, that is a very small portion of that road, and that road is paved after that bridge, up until the veterinary horse farm. That also does lessons, and that you're saying that, you know, I, I understand where you're coming from when it comes to allowing people to have a business, and in and out, and lessons, and, and taking money for that. They have improved that portion of the road. They have allowed that along with the neighbors. It's paved up until that point. Beyond that point, it is not passable for two cars. One person stops at the top of the horse barn, and the other person drives about a third of a mile down the road to let the other person by. Once that person passes, then the other person goes. That's not always the case when it comes to people that are going to the baseball ranch, allowing that passage. So while you're looking at a very small part, I also encourage you guys to, to take a look for yourself, and ask yourself the question of, if you lived here, would you be okay with that traffic? Because these are the quality of life that you're affecting of other people with horses, and when that, when you go into that, you're also talking about safety. So if I were to be riding at a point in time where Mr. and Mrs. Pryor were having a big baseball ranch operation going on, and in and out, say, four cars, back and forth, and that prevented passage from an ENT getting to me, and something happened beyond that point, are they, are they willing to take on that responsibility? That's a huge concern of mine, especially having a small child out there. I'm, I'm not, it doesn't sit well with me, because it is an equine community, and it has been that way since the implementation of the baseball ranch that has been operating up until today.
That's, that's your time limit. Any questions from up here? I appreciate those points, although they have been made before, but I understand your passion. Thank you. No, sir, I'm sorry, we only get one bite at the apple here, we'd be here all night. Go ahead, Barbara.
Barbara, we'll hit 2523 permit place. So a lot said there, wow. You know, my clients didn't put speed bumps on, and the tractor took them down, there's a lot of other things there, but I think you've got the basics of it, that there is a 30-foot easement, there's an ingress, egress easement. My client feels that he can make improvements and maintain that easement, just like Mr. Wells. And I think David's positions are, would be the same positions that I would say if I was sitting there. When, there was a special exception before the planning commission before, it was for 24 at a time. The condition that staff recommended approval of was for four at a time. But it didn't have any duration of less than times, and it didn't have any maximums. So, staff's in support of four people at a time, and you can have as many, you know, there's not a maximum. I suggested and worked with my client, and working with the neighbors, let's put a maximum on it. And so if you think about in a five period, and you all mentioned this, it's, in a five-hour block of time, if you do four students at a time, and that's a maximum, you've got five groups coming in. And it's a maximum of four. So it's not this repetitive back and forth, because we wrote conditions, so it's not like that. So, in writing the conditions, to make sure that we had some clarity, and also remember that he does one-on-one lessons and group lessons, so he'll always continue to, there's only one Mr. Pryor. He's quite acclaimed in, in what he does. And so, he'll be doing one-on-one lessons, and group lessons, they may be up to four, they may be two, pitcher, catcher. So, what the intensity that you're hearing is, is, is not what, in reality, will occur. What I did was, worked with, I wanted to make sure, as I always do, and, and when you do a special exception, the special exception is, the purpose of that is to look at the site and, and work on conditions. It's not a conditional use, it's not a rezoning, it's already saying, this is a compatible use, but let's look at the, as from a use-to-use standpoint, single family to the, the proposed special exception use, but let's look at the site, and let's work on conditions. So that's what this effort's been about with staff, and even doing it more so than what, what was done. And I even went farther than staff's recommendation. For example, if you look at condition number nine, there was an issue of barriers, and how to do that. And I said, look, staff's not in the barrier business, this planning commissioner's not in the barrier business, I'm not in the barrier business. So I wrote a strict standard there, saying, the performance standard that he asked to achieve is no balls or objects get out of his property. Very clear, so we don't have to debate if the barriers he has today, the intent- Very clear, so we don't have to debate if the barriers he has today, the intentions to use are good enough, he'll have to change that. He'll have to change his barriers. So I, even though staff supported a lesser standard, I wrote, in an effort to work with the neighbors, which I always do, and we continued it two weeks to this point, it was continued last time to this point. We weren't able to work out the fundamental issue, they just don't want the use. But I see their, you know, we worked together on conditions, which I think in the end will be better for all, because they'll be clearer. So that's how that one works. We wrote condition number one, to be more specific, and to even restrict the property even further, from to say only a maximum of 20 over the period of time. The condition regarding the road, staff wrote that condition, and it's their specificity and standards. So that was a condition that staff was recommending, and we were in agreement with. And so I can go through them each by, you know, one by one, but I think we've, you know, we've worked hard to write conditions, we've limited the use. I limited it again this week in working with the neighbors, even beyond what staff had recommended to you. We've got clear conditions about lighting, we've got clear conditions about hours of operation, noise. And, you know, I heard the baseball cracking noise, but we've had this before. Agricultural area, people are shooting, people are doing, having their horses. There's a lot going on in that area. So I don't think it's, again, I don't think it's out of compliance or not compatible with the area, and I think your staff and Ms. Spidey both told you that, so... With that, if you have any further questions, or anything about the conditions, anything further you could think we could possibly do, glad to entertain that.
Barbara, would you have any objection to the removal of the fourth condition?
No, we would not.
Well, I need to ask staff the same question. So if condition four were removed, and the road stayed in its existing condition, but condition five stayed, in other words, it still had to be passable to emergency vehicles, would you still support the application? I guess that's a Will and Denise question.
Because the reason I said, asked that question is because Will said before that he felt an emergency vehicle could get through there.
Right, but that's different than 67, or 40, or 50, whatever number of students it is. And so my question to staff is, would you still support the special exception if condition four were removed?
Pardon me, this is a road that's always gonna require periodic maintenance, regardless, obviously, because you have traffic going back and forth. So maintenance is always gonna be required, I feel. So removing this, I mean, it doesn't take away that it doesn't need to be maintained for proper traffic circulation, so...
Right, but it's a private road, so...
So I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with removing that, but clear, it needs to be maintained.
But for condition four, I don't know that they would have any legal obligation... The school would not have any legal obligation to do anything other than make it passable to emergency vehicles.
Correct.
So, but would staff still be okay with this number of students if there's no improvements to the road, other than making it passable to emergency vehicles?
I would not have any objection.
That's correct.
So can I ask a question there? So what do you do? You wait until there's an emergency, and the ambulance can't get through, and that's when you find out it's not passable?
Well, so, I mean, if...
Because condition four says that they've got to regularly maintain it, which would lead you to the assumption that, at any given time, it's passable to emergency vehicles. So I'm just a little concerned there, that if you remove it...
I'm not telling the planning commission to remove condition four, I want to be clear about that. What I'm saying, I want to know whether staff would still recommend approval of the special exception if condition four was removed? Because earlier, they testified that if they complied with condition four, it would be sufficient for 67 students. So I want to know if condition four is removed, whether they still are okay approving 67 students out there? And what I'm hearing is yes. I'm not telling you to remove condition four, I don't disagree with what you said, I'm just, I want to make sure they would still recommend approval if it was removed.
Well, I think in order to accommodate Mike's concern, and I think it's everybody's concern, is we could still require the applicant to be responsible to maintain it, to accommodate emergency vehicles.
I'm actually surprised that some of the residents...
Without going through all the others.
I'm actually surprised some of the residents want condition four removed, because what I heard is they were having a hard time coming up with money to do it. So I would think they'd actually want the school to be financially responsible for making the road.
Yeah, that's what I remembered from the last time here.
So that kind of caught me off-guard, and that's probably why Mr. Girardi asked his question, which is, now you've got somebody financially on the hook to do it, why would you object to that? But they are objecting, so...
Okay, well, just to suggest...
David, can you clarify where the 67's coming from? I'm sorry, that keeps being said, so I don't...
Well, that was the... I meant saying staff came up with that number.
Okay.
The opponents said that it would generate 67 trips.
That... That's not what...
I thought that's what she said.
Are you stating on the document that was not accepted into record? Because that's not what it says either.
What was the number that you quoted? 66, sorry.
66 is for the single-family home per week. That's what the 66 is. Not per day. 66 for their house generates 66 trips a week.
Okay.
Not the school.
We're splitting hairs here, but regardless, staff has testified that with or without condition four, you believe this site is sufficient for the number of students this school will generate?
Yes.
That's what you're telling me?
Yes, that's what we're saying.
Okay.
Okay, then I'm gonna ask the staff, then how do you justify the removal of four and still being in compliant with number five?
Well, I guess it's on the premise that it's gonna be continued to be maintained, as it is today, for traffic circulation. So there is the maintenance aspect of it that's still remaining, is my understanding. Just because removing it, like I said earlier, maintenance aspect has always been there. We will continue to have that maintenance.
Of being county-maintained?
No, it's a private road.
So how do you assure that that's being done?
This is, I assume that's part of the requirements for this easement.
Let me try to answer this question a different way, because I think I know the answer. My understanding is that the emergency vehicles do not need to stabilize to the same standard as a normal car would. I mean, there tend to be heavier-duty vehicles, and they can pass on a road that maybe the average citizen could not. So I don't think... I think four is intended, and the way I'm reading four, is that's to make the road passable to the average driver. Five is, in the event of emergency, a fire truck can get through there. Which, my understanding is that fire trucks, they plow through a lot of stuff that the normal driver would not do.
But there are also heavier vehicles that can get stuck, too. And I remember a couple instances, when I was on the county commission, that there was problems in my district because of that.
I disagree with you, but if that's your concern, then you should require condition four. That's within your problem. If you want to require condition four, the applicant's saying they're in agreement with condition four. Staff is recommending condition four. So that's really up to the planning commission.
Well, Mike, you remember when we were kids, we always used to take the Volkswagens out into the groves, because they had the motor in the back?
Yeah, they never got stuck.
Where the weight was, and they didn't get stuck. And I think that's what David's alluding to, this is a heavier vehicle, they have dual tires on them, so I think they can get... What he's saying is they can get through more than an average car could. Yes, you are.
Yeah, okay.
And, excuse me, you're not allowed...
This is chairman, you can't allow...
You're not allowed to speak. I'm sorry, you're gonna have to sit down. No, you're gonna have to sit down, I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, I apologize, but that's just the way it goes. If we had everybody doing that, you couldn't do it. Okay, good. You got it in.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question? Because I never got it answered before. I want to go back to item four, and the description about the surrounding area. It indicated, and I think one person already alluded to the fact, that there's at least a veterinarian practice going on in this area. Is there a horse-riding school there, in that area? So there are these things there. So there are some schools there already. And did they receive the same scrutiny as what we're currently going through? You don't have to answer that question, because I don't expect it. But that's the dilemma I see. You say, yes, you can run these schools here, and we've never heard about the impact that it's made on the community, nor have the residents, nor has anybody, to my knowledge. And yet, over here, we're saying, contemplating approving or denying another request. So help clarify that for me, if you could. I appreciate that. Denise, you have?
Yeah, I'm gonna answer the question. I just wanted to show you the aerial while the question is answered, and I apologize for that.
Thank you.
So the answer is, as you get to the property off Old Pasco Road, there is a riding stable. It's a very large piece of property. It's actually called Sarah Russell Riding Stables. So there's riding stables.
How many students do they have?
I'll show you.
Okay.
On your screen as well. But as you... This parcel right here, these are riding stables. It's a very large piece of property. And there's also, as stated in your agenda memo, there's also an equine sports medicine veterinarian as well. So there's those agricultural activities and uses that do generate trips as well, so... On that same road.
How many?
How many stables does she have?
How many traffic?
Any trips? I will see if I can get you that answer.
Okay, how many enrolled in the riding school itself, students? Five, 10, 20?
Barbara, while we're waiting for that answer, is there anything you have to add?
Well, I have a question for Barbara and her client.
Okay, why don't you go ahead.
So Barbara, when I asked staff earlier whether it was possible to put speed bumps on a dirt road, I thought the answer was no, but then I heard somebody testify that, in fact, one was installed with asphalt millings. And I'm not sure what the planning commission wants to do with this, but if the planning commission were to require speed bumps being installed as part of condition four, is that something that you and your client would be willing to do?
Hold on, let me confer.
Okay.
Well, Denise is looking, let me confer.
The ambulance won't come down the road. You have a broken bone, like my daughter did, they transport her out to the hospital.
I'll ask the jury to disregard that statement.
My daughter's in fire.
Sir, the bail is coming up, and he's gonna escort you out if you keep talking.
I was...
Okay.
If the planning commission wanted to impose that requirement, my client would comply. Don't know what would happen with them with the neighbors, but we would, you know, we want to comply, so...
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Barbara, one more thing, just for clarity. I'm slow today, I apologize. Can you clarify what condition four says? I mean, what portion is the applicant responsible to maintain?
Let me look at it here. It just says that we need to make sure that it's a... The standard is a safe and passable condition by providing regular maintenance. And it's got a specification there.
Is that all of Hadlock Road and Elkmont Lane? Is that just Elkmont Lane? What portion of the road?
It is, it is from where it's paved to their entrance. That's what you're seeing graph... That's what those numbers are. So when you come off Pasco Road, it has a section that's paved, and then it ends. And where it ends, to the client's property, is where you see that... That's what that description is there.
So you're saying it's basically the dirt portion of the road?
Right.
Denise, if you can't find the exact numbers, it's fine. It's already been identified, the fact that there is a school there, there's a veterinarian practice going on, so we know traffic is coming and going, so...
Right, they have...
You clarified that.
I have a flyer here from a fall festival for North Star Stables. You know, on November 29th, and they have, you know, people coming in to fall festivals and camps, and they're doing well beyond what, you know, the individual private lessons that are proposed on Mr. Pryor.
Same...
The same entrance.
Same entrance, okay, thank you. Okay, you answered that. You cleared that up for me, thank you.
Okay. Anything, any other questions from up here? Roberto, Mike, anybody?
Can I add one thing? I made myself a note, and then I forgot, and I even started. We need to receive and file the PowerPoint. You don't have a paper one, but we've already given it to the clerk, and so it needs to be received and filed, so they can officially keep it.
Okay, we have a motion to receive and file, do we?
I'm moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so I think we've had all the information. If there are no other questions, let's have a motion to approve staff's recommendation or modify it in some way.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve with staff, with the modification, with the removal of condition number four. That's... And I'll say my remarks if it's second or not, so...
All right. You have a motion? Do we have a second? Anybody have a second? Okay, die for lack of a second, any other motion? We have no other motion?
Can we have a little discussion?
Sure.
It might lead to, I guess, maybe no motion, I don't know. You know, when I look at the code regarding agricultural districts, and I'm struggling with this, and I'll be the first one to admit here. Agricultural district is to preserve the rural and open characteristics of land in the county. I mean, that's what it's there to do. These lands are agricultural lands. They're... Obviously, all the uses around everything is agricultural. It's being used for what I believe the standards were put in place for them to do, with the nature of the horse community that seems to be there. So on the surface, I think, you know, that this school is a little bit out of place to be put there. I see in the special exceptions, obviously, it says in there that private schools are allowed. I'm not convinced, though, that that was the intent of having a baseball camp school there. It's not what I think of when I think of a private school. And I have a real struggle with the conditional uses that we put on these special exemptions, because there is no mechanism. And you can say code enforcement all day long, but there is no mechanism to enforce these things unless it really gets to a fevered pitch. And so I pause when I see these things, because I think it's just gonna create a bigger mess than what it's used for. And so the special exemptions, I raise to a pretty high-level bar to get over. And I'm not convinced that this one really gets over that bar in my own mind. You know, but I hear Mr. Hansel, I think, did a very good job in bringing out that there is another school in the area, although it is an agricultural school. And it fits in to the intent of what the zoning standard is. And I think that that is a better use for that. Now, maybe they need a special exception. I don't know. That's up, I guess, maybe the staff, I'm seeing some faces over there, that I don't know if that's an agreement or disagreement, but, you know, they're there. So, I don't know. I'm not strong on either side of this thing, but I don't really see a clear reason to grant the request.
Well, the only thing I can add to it, in terms of the teaching element, is that schools throughout the county are... Can certainly be in agricultural zones. No matter what they teach, they're still schools, and this is the type of school. And I think Richard will also verify that we put schools in agricultural zones.
We do put schools in agricultural zones. The only thing I'm having a trouble with is, it's not... I mean, it's a business, more than anything else, and I was gonna make a mention that... And I was going to make a mention that it's not a school by its school standards. And I'm not sure how it's classified, if it's just named a school. But schools are allowed in any land use, with the exception of, I think, industrial, if I'm not mistaken. But just the idea of a school, I really have trouble with that because it's not a... In a way, it's educational, but it's a business more than anything else. So I don't know if it's a commercial entity or what it is, but it's not so much as a school, if it's called a school. Anyway.
I'd like to just make a quick comment. I think I've said this before. I think this piece of property is really not five acres. It's kind of like taking, you know, 10 pounds of sugar and putting it in a five-pound bag. It's just not large enough. And in the past, I've said that. And I indicated that. And that's the reasons why I've always voted no on this one. However, there is a condition here that requires, you know, you use the term "business." Well, if you're teaching riding lessons over there, that's a business. And, you know, you can't say yes to... Well, it is. It's a business. Those people don't give free riding lessons. They charge a fee. That's the bottom line. We use camps. You have, let me take these off. Facilities. It says they... Writing lessons and camps. Doesn't say it's a riding school camp. It's a camp. So you're using terminology for both. And what I always looked at is, one, property rights. Two, it's being fair and equitable. And I'm kind of like many on this board here, you know. This is questionable in this particular area whether or not this is the right type of business to run in this type of area. You do have a horse committee there. When I lived up in Lexington, Kentucky, I love horses. And people up there have horse farms. And so I can identify with that. But also, I can identify with the fact that, you know, you have a word in here that you already have schools there. So that was the dilemma on my part. So that's all I really have to say on this whole matter. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is Niktaros Pitoz, Planning and Development. On the issue of the business and the discussion points regarding being a business, I would argue that private schools can operate as businesses as well.
Right.
The Land Development Code is allowing for private schools within the zoning districts via the special exception. In this case, determination was considered... Made the consideration that this was a specialty school that would provide baseball and softball lessons.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So on that point, I don't read where it says specialty schools. I mean, if you're classifying as a specialty school, I don't see that. So to try to move this thing along, since the first motion failed for lack of a second, I'll just try to keep this thing moving along. So I'll move that we deny the request.
I second that.
So the motion maker's going to have to say which of the special exception criteria they do not meet. So you want... You need to pull those up so you can clarify.
Sure.
So let's... They're listed. Staff, can you put them up on the Elmo?
I mean, looking at the special exceptions, the characteristic of the land use is agricultural. So I don't believe it meets that characteristic.
Well, let's let Denise put up the criteria so you can... Let me take them and pull them up, too.
Let me see. Is it in the agenda memo? On the back of the agenda memo?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Thought so. It's not in the agenda memo.
It's an attachment to the agenda memo. It's like attachment, maybe five or four.
Signature sheet?
Yes, that's correct.
Can I ask for a point of order? Since the motion did not pass, does that not indicate that we've denied this request?
No.
No, no, no.
Because you made a motion to approve it with the removal of condition four.
Okay.
We just didn't get a second for that.
So we didn't get a second for the motion and we don't know how the rest of the planning commission felt.
So I'll claim number one and two.
A jar?
The proposed use is not consistent with the goals, objectives, policies, adopted in comp plan. Proposed use will create excess increased traffic or parking congestion, otherwise affect public safety.
So is it because of the roadway access? Is that your...
I think all the testimony about the road issues leads to that one. And three as well.
So I don't have a... I think the testimony you heard today could support two and three. My only concern about one is unless staff can identify a specific comp plan policy that it's... Or you can identify a specific comp plan policy that it's inconsistent with, I'm not real comfortable with you relying on that.
So is the land code part of the comp plan?
The zoning code is not.
Okay.
Now, there are compatibility policies in our comp plan. I don't know if staff has those readily available, that they could call them up. But if you don't feel it's compatible using that compatibility policy, that could be a grounds. But staff would have to pull it up and say, yes, you agree that it's not consistent with that policy. Staff, can you pull that up?
I will.
10.1, point something?
Yeah, I will do that. I also do want to mention that in your findings of fact, I mean, this is not... This is not a precedent. So the planning commission has approved another baseball and softball school, actually about two miles or so from this parcel located to the west. I just wanted to mention that, two miles southwest of this area, also in an AR, agricultural residential district.
Was that in the agenda packet?
It is, yes. It's a finding of fact. It is finding of fact...
Nine.
Number nine. Thank you.
So is your comp plan argument that it's not compatible with the area? Is that your argument?
Right.
Okay, so we do have a compatibility policy in our comp plan. If Denise could pull it up.
I wish this worked faster then.
Yeah, we can. Yeah. You just call for recess, well, that's a...
While she's looking that up, we're going to take a five-minute recess. Let's call the meeting back to order, please.
So I'll, as part of my motion, say that it is inconsistent with the future land use, 1.1, 0.1.
I think that's... 1.10.1.
Yeah. 1, 0, 1.
The one that's up on the screen?
That one.
Okay. Got it. And then as well as condition two and three?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to deny because it doesn't meet criteria one, two, and three, and inconsistent with policy 1.10.1 of the future land use element. And is that the motion you seconded?
Yes.
Now you can take discussion.
So any further discussion on the motion to deny? Okay. So let's have a roll call vote.
Michael Cox?
Yes.
Peter Hansel?
Yes.
Jamie Girardi?
Nay.
Roberto Sais?
Yes.
And Chairman Charles Gray?
Nay.
The vote was three to two with Jamie Girardi and Chairman Charles Gray voting nay. Motion passed.
Okay.
Clarify the motion.
So the motion was to deny the special exception application based on criteria one, two, and three, and specifically for criteria one, inconsistency with policy FLU 1.10.1. Any decision of the planning commission can be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. So keep that in mind as you leave today. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. The hearing is running a little long on the first item there.
Okay.
Both items, P seven and P nine, have requested their order change.
Okay.
P nine wanted to go right after this due to...
All right.
Okay, so P nine has withdrawn the request. So P seven will be next.
P seven next, okay. All right. We're ready to go then.
Good afternoon, Mary Duke, Long Range Planning Division. You are now seated as the local planning agency for this case. This is PDD 190062, a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment for CPAS 1805, Green Creek. This project is located about 778 feet south of Wilderness Lake Boulevard and east of Land of Lakes Boulevard. Proposed is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the map from RES three residential, three dwelling units per gross acre to comm commercial. The parcel is a 2.51 acre site and the parcel is currently zoned RMH Mobile Home District. The subject property is vacant and has no known environmental concerns. The site is located in the Central Market area and the applicant is proposing to utilize the subject property for an 8,600 square foot office use and a 9,800 square foot office retail use for a total of about 18,400 square feet of non-residential use. In front of the property, the US 1941 Trail, which is 12-foot wide, runs parallel to Land of Lakes Boulevard. The existing future land use map shows an existing flu as RES three in the inset down here. To the north, south, and west, the flues are RES three residential, three dwelling units per gross acre. And to the east, the flu is RES nine, residential nine dwelling units per acre. That is the Kalente Resort. The proposed future land use is comm, commercial, and that's shown in this map at the bottom as well. And just... Sorry. The... This chart summarizes the future land uses, existing uses, and zoning districts. The zoning to the north is Kalente MPUD. To the south is RMH District. To the east is... Oh, and C two, Commercial General District. To the east is MPUD Kalente Resorts and to the west is C two, Commercial General. I'm sorry, this is very sensitive. The existing uses are, to the north, wetlands, commercial, retail, wilderness commons. To the south is vacant lands. To the east is vacant open space. To the west is Land of Lakes Boulevard, which is an arterial. And again, to the west is the US 41 Trail and commercial office uses. Policy flu 1.6.1, commercial development enables... Criteria F enables commercial infill development of five acres or less in areas that are not designated as comm or town center, subject to two criteria being met. The parcel meets the two criteria for commercial infill development. The area is considered established as predominantly commercial, making it meet the definition of commercial infill within the comprehensive plan. Here's the definition of the comm, commercial flu. And since the surrounding uses include Wilderness Commons to the north and Shamrock Plaza to the west and Kalente Resort to the east, these are believed to be compatible surrounding land uses with the applicant's proposed use comprising of office and commercial uses. A transportation needs assessment was required and the volume to capacity ratio on US 41 will exceed 1.0 with or without the project in 2040. The amendment as a whole will add 414 additional PM peak hour trips than under the existing flu for the maximum trip generating use. However, the developers are proposing uses that have a lesser impact and that is estimated at only 77 additional PM peak hour trips. The additional 77 peak hour trips generated by the project will be between .7 and 1% of the available capacity on segments. The recommendation is to approve to the Board of County Commissioners the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, CPAS 1805, amending the future land use flu map 2-15, Sheet 20, from RES three residential, three dwelling units per gross acre to comm, commercial. More than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions? The applicant present? Anyone here to speak to this?
Mr. Chairman and Board members, I'll make this very quick. Todd Pressman, 334. He's Lake Road number 102 in Palm Harbor, Florida. Staff's done a very good job. We've worked closely with them. There are quite a number of notices sent out. We've not heard from anyone in the public. Your staff has told you that they've determined that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's consistent with the uses along the roadway at this area. There is C two located across the street. There's commercial development abutting to the north. And there's C two literally, just virtually, to the south as well, considering the roadway is a major arterial and that your staff has looked closely at this and came to their conclusions and presented quite a number of comprehensive plan policies that support it. We would ask for your consideration and your support. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
And I think, Mike, did you have a question about the use? You were asking about earlier?
No, not this one. This is office.
All right. Very good.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions up here?
Okay.
All right. Are you in motion? I don't see anybody to object, by the way. I didn't think I saw anybody.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We're going to move up P nine ahead of P eight, if that's okay with you.
Sure. That's fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon. Amy Hyler, Planning and Development. PDD 190521 is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment in the name of CPAL 1819, River Landing. The property... Subject property is located on the northwest and north... Northwest and southwest intersection The property... Subject property is located on the northwest and northwest and southwest intersection of Morris Bridge Road and State Road 56 in the South Market area. The applicant is seeking a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment from RES three residential, three dwelling units per gross acre to PD plan development to permit for a mix of uses including commercial office and residential development, as well as a comprehensive plan amendment creating subarea policy flu 7.1.49, Rivers Landing, which is a text amendment to the policy or to the comp plan. The existing future land use is RES three and this is the visual inset. And the proposed flu of PD, also the visual inset. The site characteristics contain category one, two, and three wetlands with which the applicant does plan to mitigate and protect, as well as two trail segments that are identified on the county's Greenway Trails and Blueways map, Handcart Trail to the east and State Road 56 Trail to the north. Handcart Trail is funded. State Road 56 Trail is a concept. This is also just an aerial, so you can see what's going on. The site is predominantly vacant right now and surrounding areas as well. The adjacent future land use and zoning consists of agricultural residential uses as the zoning predominantly and the future land use is predominantly medium to high-density residential and planned development. The PD proposed amendment is consistent with policy flu. Actually, let me back up, sorry. The proposed amendment is consistent with the intent of PD flu by encouraging mixed-use development ranging in densities and non-residential development to permit a mix of uses, including commercial office and residential. And it's also consistent with policy flu 1.4.3 transitional land uses according to the exhibit in our comprehensive plan 2-2 as the PD flu is adjacent to RES three, RES one, and RES nine future land uses. And the proposed density of this planned development is just slightly above the residential three RES three, so it's suitable for this area. The amendment is also consistent with policy flu 5.4.3 wetland avoidance, as they will be protecting and mitigating the wetlands on site. The subarea policy for Rivers Landing will include a range of potential uses, including residential, commercial, and office. These uses are subject to exchange permitted in the land use equivalency matrix as part of the companion MPUD, which you will hear, I think, later in March. And then also with respect to the subarea, we did add a condition within the subarea and this is going to be different, not from what you have, so I would like to read that into record. So, condition B on the subarea policy, if you are going to see on the agenda memo, it's not on there yet, but it will be. Rivers Landing subarea shall be encouraged to leverage natural and developed resources organized to create a safe, convenient, and accessible pedestrian and recreational network. Natural and developed resources may also be utilized as amenities to the development by providing connections to trails identified on the Pasco County Trails, Blueways, and Greenway system. And passive recreational uses and pedestrian connectivity within the network shall be supported within that design. So, we did compose that after the sire's submission of this, which was approved by staff and the applicant. The feasibility analysis for this site, the transportation needs assessment, and the utility needs assessment conclude that capacity is sufficient to provide adequate services. The school board, I do have it, school and emergency management, no comments from emergency management, so please disregard that. The school board does state that development will be subject to school impact fees and a school concurrency review. Any project that exceeds the adopted level of service will be required to mitigate the impacts, but it does not require or request school site to be proposed for this project, so they do not request a school site. So, with that being said, we recommend that the LPA find the amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Questions?
Mr. Chairman Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby PA 109 North Breast Street, Tampa, Florida, have been sworn. We have no objections with staff's recommendation. Most of you all know the River Landing MPUD has been approved for, I think, 10 or 12 years. And all we're doing here is switching the property from a RES three to PD to allow for some additional entitlements for two mixed-use parcels we're bringing in that weren't previously part of it, but are owned by the same landowner, the Zephyr Ed Company, so we're gonna try to make good mixed-use project out of it. And this is one of the three projects that are paying for the third and fourth lane of State Road 56. So, it very much behooves the county to get the projects on their way. Otherwise, there might not be funds to pay the state back over time. So, anyway, David and I worked on that for about two years, several years ago. Happy to answer any questions.
I just wanna know what took you so long.
Long time coming.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Hobby? If not, are there motion?
Any opposition?
Is there any opposition?
Seeing no one rise, move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries. Okay, are we doing P eight now?
Sorry, doing a lot of musical chairs today. Good afternoon, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. This is item P eight. You're sitting for this item as a local planning agency today. I'll read the item as quickly as possible through title and then go over why we're here today. Today, you're hearing an ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Section 1,001.4 Visibility, 1,001.5 Navigability, and Protection of Water Courses, Appendix A Definitions, and Other Sections as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for Applicability, Repealer for Providing for Severability, Inclusion into the Land Development Code, and an Effective Date. The reason why we're here today is just to give you a brief history of our Section 1001 of the Land Development Code, Docks and Seawalls, and how that came to be. On March 27, 2007, the Board of County Commissioners adopted ordinance 0706, which amended the Land Development Code... Not the Land Development Code, rather, the Pasco County Code of Ordinances relating to the obstruction of navigability and the protection of county waterways. In 2010, the Board of County Commissioners amended that same ordinance to prohibit roof walls, enclosures, or other similar visual obstructions on docks. On January 1, 2012, with the restated Land Development Code, the dock ordinance was moved into the Land Development Code and was assigned Section 1001, Docks and Seawalls. Fast forward to 2017, the Board of County Commissioners held workshops on docks. At that... At that, it was around August of 2017 or so, the BCC provided direction to move forward with an ordinance allowing roofs or similar coverings over docks on privately owned lakes. Over the past year, there have been other changes that the Board of County Commissioners has debated regarding docks, regarding seawalls. On February 5, 2019, the county attorney's office, based on the board direction, presented an introductory ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners. Within that introductory ordinance, several revisions were being proposed to Section 1001, Docks and Seawalls. Those include 1,001.4 Visibility to allow roofs, walls, and enclosures to be constructed over docks on privately owned inland lakes. Amendments to Section 1001.5, Projection and Location of Docks and Seawalls, so that section is going to be renamed, to allow more of the canal to be used for a dock in a situation where there is a dead end of the canal. So, in other words, right now, the... It just went blank on me. Right now, the code as it is written only allows a third of projection into a third of the width of the waterway in the canal with an actual dock. So, this allows a greater projection at the dead end of canals as long as certain criteria are being met and those are in the ordinance. Additionally, we're making some changes to define or redefine some definitions associated with the mean-high waterline and with waterfront properties. There will be a separate amendment because these are two other areas within the introductory ordinance that was presented to the board to clarify that permitting will be required for the dock seawalls, associated equipment, and roofs. Also, there will be provisions, and again, this will be a separate amendment to the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, which does not come to the local planning agency, amending Chapter 114 Waterways to require seawall maintenance on all seawalls. And so, with the amendments that were proposed to the Board of County Commissioners on February 5, 2019, through that introductory ordinance, the Board of County Commissioners directed the Planning and Development Department to proceed with public hearings on the proposed amendments. So, today, we ask that you find the proposed ordinance amendments consistent with the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan and recommend approval of the ordinance amendments to the Board of County Commissioners. And I'm here with any questions that you may have. And I believe there may be some folks in the public who may have some questions also.
Do we have any questions for Denise up here? Are we only talking about lakes, Denise?
We're talking about lakes, inland private lakes, not on coastal waters.
Okay.
That was the direction from the board.
I have quite a few questions. Maybe we ought to allow the public to speak first.
Yeah, that's...
The ordinance is not dealing with just lakes. It's dealing with waterways in general.
With waterways in general, however, allowing the 1001 deals with waterways in general, which includes lakes, canals, the Gulf. But the roofs over is for inland privately maintained lakes only. That was the direction of the board.
All right. Okay, let me... Do we have anybody here that would like to speak or have questions? Okay, then we can get back up to Denise.
Well, sorry. Bill Thomas, 9823 San Mateo Way, Port Ritchie. I'm actually here for... I thought this was supposed to be for the roof overs around the canals and open water on the Gulf. And that's not what this is all about, so really, I don't have a whole lot to say, except for I did wanna say something about the canals and maybe the roof overs, if that is anything, has anything to do with anything that's going to be coming up here at all. Is that correct or not?
We don't know. We don't know what the county's gonna recommend and we...
Well, then, I really don't. I don't have much to say about it.
Can I ask a question now? Because when I read what is proposed here, it is prohibiting roofs in anything other than a lake.
That's a correct statement.
So, if somebody has a roof now and it gets damaged, they won't be able to replace it.
Well, there's a section here that talks about the nonconformity. So, if it is... So, 1200 talks about if it exceeds more than 50% of the value, then you could not. That's a correct statement. But that was always the case, so if it predated when the determination was made that roofs are not allowed over docks, which was in 2010 or so. So, if... Those are legally nonconforming. If they want to replace them because of damage, then they have that section in 1200 that talks about nonconformities. If they want to maintain them, that's a different story. They can continue to maintain them.
But the item that Mr. Thomas is concerned about is affected by what's in front of us.
Well, the bigger picture here is, I guess, that if you're not allowing roofs over the boat lifts, I don't see the relevance in that. And the reason I'm saying that is because if a boat is in the air and it's on a lift, it is blocking the view from whoever that may be. Putting a roof over top of it to protect what you bought, I don't see why that's a problem. I know that these people, they spend $30,000, $40,000 for a boat. I wanna make sure that it... I've been out there and I've watched 30 birds on top of a boat and they just wreck it. And it doesn't matter what you do, you can't keep them off of there unless you put a roof over it. And the sun, it beats them up pretty bad. It's just my take on it. I really don't... I don't see where a roof over is inhibiting anybody's view. The boat lift itself is inhibiting a view, so I don't see where a roof over top of anything makes any difference. It's my opinion.
All right, well, I mean, I think maybe there are people up there that would agree with what you just said. I just don't know if what we're talking about addresses what is concerned.
Well, and that was my thing. I apologize for that. I actually thought that it was for that.
No, no apology required. We can... We'll speak to that when we get through the other people that wanna have questions.
All right, thank you.
And make sure that's clear to you.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for coming.
Roger Sanders, 13615 Stacy Drive, Hudson. And I was sworn in. I was basically coming up here to talk about the same thing he was. But I'd also started petition and I had a lot of signatures around our neighborhood in Sea Ranch and Leisure Beach. And I don't see how to obstruct any view either, because what's gonna be that high up? Because the roof's up higher than the boat. And because of the tide movement, your boat's up pretty high. And the two-story houses are gonna be looking down anyway, so they're not gonna obstruct them. It just doesn't make sense that they have that rule. And like you said, the boats were a major expense. I'd appreciate any help I could have.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, Denise, I don't see anybody. Can we answer, sort of clarify those points?
Yeah, so I've been here a long time, and so I might be able to give you some history as to why the board directed staff the way they did. The original prohibition on roofs over docks originated primarily out of some issues in Gulf Harbors. And there's... They're not here today, but if we rewinded a few years, you would see this room packed with residents of Gulf Harbors opposed to roofs over docks and the fact that it's impairing, they believe impairing their vision of the Gulf. However, we haven't, to my knowledge, had any substantial opposition to roofs over docks on lakes. And so, the board, rather than wanting to have that battle with what the history of what happened with Gulf Harbors and tackle that issue about where and to what extent roofs should or should not be allowed on docks, on roofs over docks on the Gulf, they said, "Well, we don't have any issue on the lakes. Let's get that approved, since there's no controversy about that," and move that forward along with these other changes that are being talked about. And then, "Let's push off this larger fight about whether you can have roofs over docks on the Gulf to a later day." And so, the board direction, the most recent direction we got was move this ordinance forward. It's not necessarily precluding you in a future amendment to allow roofs over docks on the Gulf, but I think there's... The majority of the board did not wanna delay getting roofs over docks on the lakes because of that lingering issue on the Gulf. Am I making sense?
Yes, perfect sense.
And they wanted a quick fix to the roofs over docks on the lakes since there's no controversy over that. And they sort of punted on the issue of roofs over docks on the Gulf because there has been controversy associated with those particular roofs.
Like that battle another day, basically.
Right. I'm not saying that eventually the board won't get there, but they didn't wanna hold up somebody who was trying to get a roof over their dock on a lake from doing it today because of the fight that's occurring in Gulf Harbor. That's how this got to where it is today.
Okay.
You wanna add anything, Denise?
Thank you, David. No, I was here during that time as well and I remember all that happening, so, no, I think you nailed it. That's exactly what occurred.
Okay.
And the other thing is there was even a alternative relief application that came to the old planning commission that I think got denied by the old plant...
The old DRC.
The old DRC that was denied, and that one was a roof over dock on the Gulf.
Yes.
And so, there's a tortured history of the roofs over docks on the Gulf that I think the board was trying to avoid with this particular ordinance.
And that didn't happen that long ago, and it was also a fairly half-full room, whatever.
Okay, well, yeah, I guess, just to make sure that you understand, those of you who came to ask about it, it doesn't preclude that you're gonna be able to do something in the future. It just doesn't deal with it at this moment. I think that's a pretty fair statement, right?
Yeah, there may be a majority of the board that's willing to allow it at some point. It's just that I don't think they were willing to tackle that with this particular ordinance. ordinance, and that's how it got to you, like this.
All right. Anything else, any other questions from up here?
I've got a few. I've got quite a few.
Yeah.
Sorry. So, under visibility, B1, so currently it says, says, no dock or similar structure shall exceed a maximum height of 15 feet above the mean high watermark.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so now you're proposing that this height limit also applies to lifts, pilings, roofs, walls, enclosures, so, so forth. And, so the problem with that is, is I'm a boater. I put a, I put a lift in my backyard, which would be hard since I don't live on the water, but if I did live on the water and I put a boat, a lift in, and I put my boat on it, I'm going to be above 15 feet when I pull my boat out of the water. So, from a practical standpoint, and I'm telling you as a boater, number one, doesn't make any sense, because the second I pull my boat out of the water, I can promise you, I'm now well in excess of 15 feet.
15 feet of the mean high watermark.
I'm well in excess of 15 feet of the mean high watermark.
Of the mean high watermark.
So, I mean, even, the lift might even be that high.
And I believe the intent of this is that similar structures were always considered lifts, pilings, roofs, walls, and it's just defining what the similar structures are. That's why the, the term similar structures got stricken through, because it was better expressed as to what similar structures are.
But I don't think you're better expressing it, because the second you say a lift, you're going to put a boat on that lift, and, you know, it, it's going to be higher than 15 feet. So now you've got an issue where you get one neighbor mad and another neighbor, you know, they may not like that boat because it's obstructing their view, and it will, you know? The, also, the, the roofs and overhead coverings, again, I don't personally agree with as being a boater. I mean, I know how much money I have invested in my boat, and, you know, it's not uncommon for somebody to spend more money on a boat than they do their home. And you want to protect it, I can assure you of that. So, but I hear the fight that is going on, I won't stick my toes in that, but I do think that the, the lift issue there needs to be addressed.
Just to clarify, two is exactly what the ordinance says today, except that it was broken down in a different way stating that if it existed prior to June 2010, and that you also have to have a permit, you know?
Right. So, the next item down, 1,001.5.
Mm-hmm.
So obstruction, you're completely striking that?
That's being stricken, because it's being addressed in the other sections.
Show, show me where, because I must have missed that.
Oh, sorry, this is where this obstruction prohibited? This is where we're going to make a change to section, I apologize, it's in the last slide. Of course, it's not moving now. Okay, so this is, we're going to, we're going to make a change to the code of ordinances, and we're going to talk about sea walls and obstructions in that section. And it's going to be called dock and seawall maintenance, and that's all going to go into Chapter 114 Waterways of the Pasco County Code of Ordinances, instead of being in Land Development Code.
Okay, so that's going to be, that's a board issue?
Yes, that's a board issue.
All right. So I, I just want to say that, you know, that I'm assuming that you're going to include a prohibition from dumping or putting any type, anything abandoned into the navigable water.
Yes, yes, it's, I think the subsection is called abandoned or derelict property.
Okay, then you go on to two in that section. I apologize, it would now be the new A, Item Two exception, so number F.
Yes.
The applicant provides an engineering certification that the projection is not, will not impair the navigability of the channel. So what does that mean, engineering certification?
So the way that it was envisioned, and we discussed this at the ordinance development team, is that there would be a letter from a qualified professional stating that there would not be, that boat access cannot, would not be, the navigability of the channel would not be impeded. That's what, what we had discussed.
Okay, so I guess my question is the practical application of that. Where do you find an engineer? And is, is that really the intent for you, for someone to have to hire an engineer to do this certification that my dock goes out 10 feet and my boat is 10 feet wide, so I'm 20 feet out? Wouldn't it just be better if there's a, a survey done showing that? As, I mean, I know I could get a surveyor to do that.
Right.
To the engineers in the room, can I get an engineer to do that?
It's really specific, so, where is it?
Well, a survey is already required in this applica, so in the application, a survey is already required, so we have to do the.
I saw that, but now I'm seeing that I've got to hire a surveyor and an engineer. I mean, I'm just asking, is that what you mean by this?
Yes, that's what it, that's what it would mean. You would have to have a surveyor to do the, the rights, the navigable rights, and then you would have to do, have an engineer to, or whatever professional does this type of thing, to specify that it's not impeding navigability at the end of the, of the canal.
If the concern is the phrase engineer, you could, staff could change it to engineer or other qualified professional. That way, if, if there's some other professional that staff feels is appropriate to testify as the navig, I think the issue was that staff does not have anybody in-house, to my understanding, that can say with any level of expertise, whether it's impairing the navigability of the channel. So they want the applicant's representative, some expert, to say, if I build this, it's not going to stop boats from getting by.
Well, this is at the end of the channel, right?
At the end of the channel.
But I, I'm just concerned, I mean, is, can you find someone to do that, is what I guess I'm asking?
Again, I don't know exactly what type of engineer can do this, but let me ask you something. We, we write down this, or you write down this when you're a staff, do you check what is going on in Pinellas, Hillsboro, the assets, something similar? For me, it doesn't make any sense, to be honest with you, to.
This particular section applies only to a very, very specific situation, which is the dead end of the canal. So we're just basically allowing the excess of, of the use of the dock to exceed a third of the width of the waterway at the dead end of a canal. So, do other locations discuss this? I believe they do, and I believe that this, this information may have been taken from the, from another local government, but I am not absolutely certain.
Ultimately, what it comes down to is I think staff doesn't want somebody to build a dock that's going to stop somebody else from getting their boat through.
Understand, but, yeah, I agree with that.
The question is, who's best to say that that hasn't occurred? I don't know, if it's not an engineer, who would it be? If you wanted to say engineer or other qualified professional, I don't know, that may work. But clearly, staff does not have anybody in-house that can make that determination.
But I, I don't know why a surveyor wouldn't be able to do that.
Again, in my opinion, a survey will tell you, you know, what is the distance that we have free in the canal to navigate there. So, do we have a standards in the canal that they need to be, meet the, the needs to navigate in the canal? Can we find that information?
As it was discussed, and I'm not sure if you were part of this discussion, David, I think we also talked about how there's some areas that have more depth, less depth, and, and navigating that part of the, of the channel.
Yeah, I don't think it's just an issue of the width.
Right.
Somebody has to know the depth of the channel and.
Do you imagine hiring somebody that is specialized to check the depth of the channel and all that? That would be cost prohibitive. It's not realistic.
Well, their alternative is to meet the one-third requirement, because staff is basically saying, if you meet the one-third.
Yeah.
We know it's not going to impair navigability. This is somebody that doesn't want to meet the one-third. And so there's a presumption in the ordinance, if you don't meet the one-third, you may be impairing navigability. But I think Denise is right, that there's not going to be that many people, most people just meet the one-third, and they move on, and they're, they build their, they build their dock. This is a very individualized situation where somebody wants to exceed a third, and staff says they're okay with it, as long as it's not going to impair a boat from getting through. If you have a better idea of who could certify that that's not going to occur, I think staff would be open to it.
When you're getting a navigable, navigability, it also depends on what are you trying to navigate down the channel? I mean, are you trying to bring an aircraft carrier down? It's not going to go, okay? But a, but a kayak will, you know? So.
Yeah, but if somebody probably would have to, that's why somebody does a site-specific analysis of the boats that are using that canal, the depth of the canal, the width of the canal. I just think staff doesn't want to have to do all of that work, or be liable if somebody can't get their boat through.
Well, David, this might be a silly question, but we're talking about the end of the canal, and we're saying a third.
The problem is some people turn around.
But the canal's 200 feet long, so you're, you're using the term a third.
Of the width.
Third of the width of the canal.
Well, okay, you said the width.
Yeah, the width.
All right.
And even at the end, somebody might be using the end to turn their boat around. And so staff has no way of knowing whether what this is going to. But if, if your concern is that you don't, they're not sure they can find an engineer to do it, maybe just change it to engineer or other qualified professional, that, maybe there's a boat captain that's qualified to make that, who's got 20 years of driving a boat through narrow channels that could certify that. I, I don't know. Maybe you could.
Well, I mean, I'm just, whenever I see a requirement for engineering certification, my thought is, is that, okay, is there such an individual that does that? So if you're building an ordinance that, and there's not that person that does it, then we're going to be back here again, you know, and somebody get caught up in this trap.
So I think that could be solved by just saying engineer or other qualified professional.
I mean, I, I think that works for me.
Okay, I do agree with Mike, that I, I think there's an issue with the 15 feet above the mean high watermark. I think it'd be more likely to be 15 feet above the top of the seawall.
If there's a seawall.
Yeah, assuming there's a seawall.
You know, you've got that issue.
Or whatever.
I personally think that this, I think you need to massage this a little bit more before we pass this one way or another. Moving on to the, like, Item E there.
Okay.
Flotation material? Is that being stricken because it's going in the other?
Going in Pasco County Code of Ordinances.
Got it, okay. And then, under definitions, where you have here mean high waterline, it shall also mean an ordinary high waterline of non-tidal natural, natural water bodies. The precise delineation of the ordinary high waterline or mean high waterline shall be determined through a site-specific studies and field determinations by the applicant and SWF MUD, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and/or the Army Corps of Engineers. So I'm, again, I'm asking app, you know, how you're going to apply that. So, somebody has a piece of property and they need to know where the mean high waterline is, are we saying here that there needs to be a site study? What, the way I'm determined, it needs to be a site study by the applicant and SWF MUD, the Department of Protection, and/or Army Corps of Engineers?
So when we get a survey and it shows the mean high waterline, that's already determine, that's already shown on the survey based on the surveyor's information, who has already obtained all this information from all these locations? So I don't know that that is any, any, any different, other than defined this way, than what we currently do today.
So, it's, because I'm always concerned when I, when we start putting in here that the Army Corps of Engineer can get into something, or SWF MUD can get into something. I would much rather say as determined by a survey, by a licensed surveyor.
Okay.
Then on waterfront property, property that butts a navigable water body, so does that include lakes?
Lakes are navigable. It's just, I think the differentiation here is that, so a lot of people say to me, oh, I have a drainage pond behind my house. I'm like, is it navigable? They're like, well, I could put a remote control boat in it. I'm like, no, can you put, you know? So I, this is, this is actually a term that's not defined, so this is now being defined. As you can see, it's strike through underline, I mean, bold and underline, so it's a non-defined term, this term here.
Waterfront property, you're saying?
Waterfront property.
It's non-defined.
It's not defined right now in our code.
Okay, so you're.
We're now just defining it.
You're defining it as, as a navigable water body?
Yes. And that's current practice.
And now I'm going to ask you, by, navigable by what? I mean.
By a motorized boat.
By a motorized boat?
Yes.
Okay.
Not a remote control boat, a motorized boat.
But what about, I mean, if somebody lives on a small lake? You, you may or may not put a motorized boat in there. I mean, it may not be appropriate to put a motorized boat in there, but it's okay for kayaks, and they'd want a dock with a roof on it to protect their kayak.
But you could already, so if that happens, you could already do that anyway, because this ordinance already tells you, you could, I mean, if it goes through, this ordinance already tells you, you could do that.
All right, okay.
Yeah, because it's a private, you know, inland lake.
So, so what are you asking us to do to approve this?
We're just asking you to find it consistent with the comprehensive plan, and just move for approval to the Board of County Commissioners, and I can make whatever modifications that the, the local planning agency suggests, that are consistent with the board's direction on the item.
The main item for me would be the 15 feet above mean high water.
Yeah, that's the, that's the main item for me, too, and I don't know how we, we fix that on the fly here, because.
Well, I think you could give direction to staff to, you have some idea what it should be? I guess that's the issue, is you don't know what it should be.
Yeah, I really don't, because, I mean.
Maybe an engineer would.
Maybe, maybe. That's too funny.
We could make 20 feet, and that might be more suitable.
You know, the thing is, is that 10 years ago, a 30-foot boat on a lift was probably about the max that you would see, but now, I mean, they make lifts to, to lift a 40, 50-foot boat out of the water. So it's going to be a lot higher. Where do you measure it from? So I, I don't, I honestly don't know the, how to, how to address that, other than say, I think that that's going to be a problem.
Well, I think you could give staff direction to fix the paragraph, and make it consistent with what's in the real world. And they'll have to just investigate what that is. I don't, I agree with you, you're not going to be able to fix it today, but I suspect staff could get that fixed between now and the time it gets to the board. Do you agree, Denise?
I suspect that it can happen, but it might be a walk-on, because this item is due tomorrow.
But there's two public hearings in front of the board, right?
Yes, absolutely. It could definitely make it before the adoption, for certain.
What you really need to do is look in, down in the, the really heavy, dense areas that have lots of boats, like in the Miami area and stuff like that.
Got it, Fort Lauderdale, Miami, intercoastal.
You know, I mean, those are just huge, huge boating areas, and I think there's probably some direction that may be their ordinances on how they deal with it.
Will do. You also want me to place in, just, I just want to make sure that I'm doing everything as you need. 1,001.5 A to F, you want me to add or other qualified professional?
Individual.
Other qualified individual. And then on the mean high waterline definition, you want me to state the precise delineation of the ordinary high waterline or mean high waterline shall be, shall be as determined by a licensed surveyor and mapper.
Right, and then strike through.
The rest of it.
SWF MUD and Department of Environmental Protection, Army Corps of Engineers. With those additions and comments and deletions, I would move for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? Hold in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for this matter, you'll be sitting as the local planning agency. My name's Ed Zodion, I'm a planner with Long Range Planning, and the title, as soon as we get the PowerPoint started, is CPAS 1806 Rangeland, and the PDD number is PDD 19-0092. I'll proceed, if that's okay.
Yes, please do.
The project is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to change the current flu from rez three to COM. The property is 2.875 acres, it's located at the northeast intersection of Starkey Boulevard, excuse me, and Rangeland Boulevard. Current zoning is AC, the site is vacant, and the proposed use is going to be a neighborhood commercial district for retail. I was going to show you the current and future land use, and we'll get to those, however, as I said, the current land, the current future land use is rez three, and the proposed is to change it to COM. The adjacent future land uses and zoning are as follows. The zoning districts, to the north is AC, to the south is an MPUD, it's Longleaf, to the east is AC and an MPUD, which is Starkey Ranch, and to the west is AC and MPUD, which is Longleaf. The future land uses in all directions is R3, or, excuse me, rez three. The existing use to the north is a cemetery, to the south is Rangeland Boulevard, which is a vision collector and vacant, to the east is a Duke Power Energy Right-of-Way and vacant, and then to the west is Starkey Boulevard, which is a collector. In determining the consistency with the COM plan, the applicable policy flu is 1.6.4, and specifically subsection B, which states that, which will permit small-scale neighborhood commercial uses in areas adjacent to residential uses only if the following four conditions are met. First is that the property must be located on either a collector or an arterial, and preferences provided for those tracks of land that are intersections. The parcel is not to be located within a single-family neighborhood, the parcel should not proliferate or set a precedent for any future strip commercial zonings, and will serve the needs of the immediate area. Now, conducting an analysis of those four categories with respect to this site, as I indicated earlier, it is on the northeast corner of Rangeland and Starkey Boulevards, both of which are collectors, and it is in the intersection. It does not sit within any of the single-family neighborhoods, it's freestanding. With respect to the, either proliferate or setting a precedent, it's bounded by a Duke Power Right-of-Way, as well as a cemetery. So, there won't be a contiguous expansion, and because this section requires these four conditions to be met, it will not, it should not set a precedent for any strip commercial zoning going forward, because this does have to meet these four criteria. And then, the, the last criteria is, the parcels to the west are in the Longleaf MPUD, which is currently planned for 1,387 residential units, and the parcels to the east are located in the Starkey Ranch MPUD, which is currently planned for 4,272 units. So, it is going to be meeting the needs of the, the neighborhoods, and your staff feels that the four categories have been addressed. A transportation needs assessment was required, however, it was determined that the existing transportation network had sufficient capacity to address the increased traffic from this site. Your staff is recommending that this board recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, and I'll be delighted to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. So, is there any questions from?
Has there been an identified usage of it?
I'm not aware of one, sir.
Good.
Okay. Any applicants present? You want to say anything, or you good to go?
So, I have a question on Mr. Starkey, if there's an identified usage yet?
Could you?
If you could come up, please, Trey.
You got to earn your, your money.
Trey Starkey, 10-730 Lake Blanche Drive, Trinity.
No identified use?
No identified use, no.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Hello, simple.
Okay.
Okay, so do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
I'm moved.
Okay, we're adjourned.